Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Welcome to the Morro Bay City Council Meeting, February 14, 2023, and Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. We'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you, and the flag salute. Thank you again, everyone, and we're going to start with closed session report, please. Mr. Newmeyer?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I'd like to report that on item CS5 today, the City Council directed the City Manager to execute a contract with Mosaic Recruiting to seek a new permanent city manager for the City of Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. And we will move into Mayor, Councilmember Reports, Announcements, and Presentations. And I will look to my right, Councilmember Barton.
Well, I had the experience of going to the county's MRF where they sort all the recyclables, and that was a very interesting trip. I went with the Board of the IWMA out to the site, and we were able to climb up and down, watching all the recyclables going through there and being sorted off into different directions. Very interesting, and just points up to the benefits of having our blue container and with all our recyclables in it, because they do all get sorted and then packed up into bales and sold. So away they go after that. So if they don't just get trashed. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum?
I'm good right now. Thanks.
Councilmember Edwards?
I'd just like to welcome everyone tonight and say a Happy Valentine's Day, and it's great to see some new faces out there. Thank you for being here.
Councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have two announcements. Tomorrow is the last day to apply for CalFresh if your household was impacted by the disaster and not currently already receiving this benefit. What you can get is an EBT card that is used at all stores that accepts SNAP and EBT, and you can apply for this at mybenefitscalwin.org, M-Y-B-E-N-E-F-I-T-S-C-A-L-W-I-N dot O-R-G. And my second announcement is that there are free tax services available for those of you who qualify if you're low income. There's a couple of different organizations that offer assistance to help you prepare your taxes. One of them is United Way, and their phone number is 805-541-1234, and their website is taxes@unitedwayslo.org. Also, Cal Poly College of Business offers it. Their email address, oh, sorry, their website is, let me backtrack, phone number 805-756-2667. And lastly, AARP offers assistance to, it doesn't matter what your income level is, you don't have to be low income to get assistance, and you can call them at 805-931-6308. And that is all I have for this evening.
Okay, I found, I do have one announcement, not as, a little different vein, but the Morro Bay 23rd Annual Citywide Yard Sale will be on the weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of March 24th, 25th, and 26th. And so if anyone's interested, the hours are from 8:00 to 3:00, free to residents and businesses in Morro Bay. And to register, if you want to be on the list, you email Liz, L-I-Z, at morrobay.org, and that will put you on the treasure map. And you can donate your leftover usable items to your favorite charity, and the deadline to sign up to be on the map is Friday, March 17 by 3:00 p.m. And the nonprofit host sale this year will be the Morro Bay Active Adults, the seniors. And if you don't want to have a sale and would like to clean out some of your gently-used items, you can donate to them. And buyers, the Digital Yard Sale Treasure Map will be available Monday, March 20. You will be able to get a link on their website at www.morrobay.org/events.
Thank you. And I did skip one step. I got so excited starting this meeting with it being Valentine's Day, I forgot to ask the city clerk to establish a quorum. Are you good?
Would you like me, I think we're good. Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Ms. Watson. I'm going to share just one item. Myself, the Public Works Director, Mr. Qualick, and our new harbor director, who the city manager will be introducing to you in a few minutes, will be attending the annual Seamink Conference at the end of this month in Washington, D.C. The conference provides an opportunity for harbor districts and cities like Morro Bay that have harbors to speak to relevant federal agencies, congressional members, committees about the importance of dredging our harbor, and other key matters related to California harbors and waterfronts. So in addition, our group will meet with the EPA, the Bureau of Water Reclamation, about the WORF, FEMA, about the recent storm impacts, Bureau of Ocean and Energy Management regarding offshore wind, and then our congressional representatives about the Morro Bay infrastructure needs. We have the potential of meeting with Housing and Urban Development about the North Key Pier funding we received last year in the federal budget and potentially some other agencies. So we'll provide a summary when we come back, and we will be zooming in the end of the month to join you from D.C. Thank you. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Collins, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Scott Collins, City Manager here. As the mayor mentioned, we do have a new harbor director, Ted Chafon, who joins us from the city of Oceanside, where he helped run the harbor there, and we're delighted to have him arrive as of Monday this week. And want to thank Becca Kelly for her great work as the interim harbor director, and a lot of interesting things thrown her way, including a 100-year storm. So she's done great in doing that, and we really appreciate Ted arriving and helping lead the harbor into the future. Thank you. On related harbor news, we did receive the new refurbished harbor boat, and we want to thank, on bottom of our hearts, the friends of the harbor department and all those who donated. I think they raised over $100,000 for the refurbishment of this boat that we got on sale from Port San Luis. Tremendous team effort. I'm delighted to have that now in our quiver of boats. And with that in mind, there will be a christening of that new boat down at the harbor on Monday, February 20 at 10:00 a.m., so I hope everybody can come. The city put a goal survey out for the community members to look at and to provide input through our goals process, which we're going to advisory boards and commissions and seeking input in other ways to get input for the council to grapple with probably in late March, early April, as they revise and update the city goals moving forward. Sarah has a few announcements, as well as Greg, sorry, Sarah, John Serrios, our Assistant City Manager, and Greg Qualick, our Public Works Director. So I'll start with Sarah. Thanks.
Thank you, City Manager Collins. And just a brief announcement, I wanted to make the city council and the public aware that the city received three, actually three, awards for financial reporting and budgeting recently from both the federal and the statewide industry boards that provide these awards. So the federal awards come from the Government Finance Officers Association, and those are for excellence in budgeting for the fiscal year 2223 adopted budget, and for excellence in financial reporting for the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2021. And finally, the State California Society for Municipal Finance Officers provided an award for excellence in budgeting for the current year's adopted budget. And just wanted to take a minute to thank staff in the finance team and also throughout the city for their contributions to those documents, and of course, to the city council for your leadership and for prioritizing transparency and fiscal stability and elevating the importance of those key documents for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Greg?
Thank you, City Manager Collins. I have three quick announcements. First, some good news. We are mostly done with the two paving projects. So Anvil, Anvil Sub Griffith has now repaved Quintana up and down. On the south side of Quintana, that's mostly a pavement edge-to-pavement-edge treatment. On the north side, because the road was already in decent condition, except for the trenches, the subcontractor only worked on those trench areas. And then the Pappich major arterial dig-out work that was being done over the past couple of weeks has all but concluded. All that's left is South Bay Boulevard. The subgrade under South Bay is too wet for us to get any work done in there, so we're going to, we're going to wait that out. And if it, if the rain keeps coming, then we may just push that portion of the project out for a future project. There are, excuse me, there are some punchless items on both of those projects, so you may still see crews out there, but all the major work is now done. Second, proud to announce that the city received a Habitat Conservation Fund grant to the $220,000. It's a small grant, but it's for one of our newest parks, the Franklin Riley Park, to provide some improvements there, and that was done with consultation with the Morro Bay Historical Society. So we're very excited about that. We haven't met with them yet about it. We just got word about a week ago. So that's good news. And then finally, the Morro Bay Water Resources Center is having its ceremonial opening next Thursday, the 23rd, and the community is invited to a family-friendly open house from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. again, next Thursday, March, excuse me, February 23. And there's information about that on our website under Hot Topics. You could sign up and RSVP for a tour. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And the city goal survey is also listed on the front page of the city website, morrobayca.gov. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. At this point, we're going to have a presentation from the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience, and I'm going to ask George Costero to come up, please.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Honorable City of Morro Bay Mayor Carla Wixson, Mayor pro-term Laura Barton, Councilmembers Cindy Edwards, Jennifer Ford, and Sarah Landrum, and City Managers Scott Collins and Dana Swanson. My name is George Costerico, and I'm a Public Information Officer for the U.S. Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. The first thing I'd like to do is absolutely extend my gratitude on behalf of the SBA for the extraordinary and muscular engagement by the city council here. Jennifer, you've been a big part of showing up at the events, I understand, and I wasn't there initially, so we thank you for your support, as well as the administration of City of Morro Bay, and as well as I want to really acknowledge the extremely active and accommodating Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce and Business Center led by President, CEO Eric D. Crawford. Excellent, really helpful in terms of giving me, acting as a navigator, giving me some insight into the communities and helping me reach to groups that we need to reach. So essentially, without these pillars of unwavering support, we wouldn't be able to serve as well as we have since the catastrophic event of early and mid-January. In addition, I also want to acknowledge the offices of U.S. Representative Salud Carayal, State Senator John Laird, and Assemblyman, Assembly Member Don Addis, who remain equally strident and supportive of our mission to offer services to the residents of the city and the San Luis Obispo County greater area. The SBA Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience is here following the president's major disaster declaration of January 14, 2023, for human loss, physical damage, and economic injury as a result of the severe winter storms, flooding, landslides, and mudslides that began on December 27 in many parts of California, especially along this beautiful central coast. This presidential declaration covers San Luis Obispo County as a primary or designated county. So what that means is, when I say primary designated county, is that our federal program provides low-interest federal disaster loans to assist businesses and residents that may not be insured or may be underinsured as a result of the severe winter storms that began on December 27, 2022. So in terms of benefits that are out there that people can apply for, for individuals and families, this includes up to $200,000 to repair or replace real estate damage for homeowners, and for both homeowners and renters, up to $40,000 to apply for a loan to replace personal property. For businesses, which includes nonprofit organizations and places of worship, property damage of up to $2 million is available to repair or replace real estate, machinery and equipment, inventory, or other assets that were damaged or destroyed. Finally, we have something called an economic injury, which is Economic Injury Disaster Loan, also known as EIDL, which is for up to $2 million with or without property damage, for working capital needs that would not have been disrupted otherwise to help until normal operations resumed due to disaster. So an example, of course, would be an impasse on 101 or Highway 1, or just, it just, you know, creating an excruciating set of economic circumstances. We also have mitigation assistance for eligible SBA disaster loan borrowers who may choose to receive expanded funding to help mitigate their home or business. So that's an added value that some people are not aware of. One thing I do want to announce is that this is very critical. We have two important deadlines. The first one is a deadline for physical damage. That is March 16, 2023, and the EIDL disaster loan deadline is farther out, which is October 16, 2023. I also want to basically let everybody know that the Grand Avenue Disaster Recovery Center that we've had closes tonight at 7:00 p.m. But I do want to also announce that the SBA will be soon, hopefully tomorrow, announcing a new location for what's called a Disaster Loan Outreach Center, or a DLOC. And as soon as we get that information, you as a city and the entities are going to hear first. I've got, in my time here, and with the help of Ms. Crawford and others, I've identified, if you can believe it, upwards of 80 groups and entities in this county that have helped get the word out. So this is a very, very involved community, this county here, and I just want to thank everyone for their help. So we do encourage people to complete the SBA application, even if they're not sure if they need it. So if approved, the loan becomes an option, kind of like when you get pre-approved for a mortgage. So it's just good to know what your options are, and we encourage people to come in and find out what's available. We also, because this is a presidential declaration, we are partners with FEMA, which also provides benefits for survivors. We encourage everyone who has or believe they have suffered a loss to start by registering with FEMA. The fastest way to do that is through the website at wwwdisasterassistance.gov, and you can also apply by calling 1-800-621-3362. And through that process, you can toggle into small business if you need to. The Small Business Administration and other state and local resources have been at the local assistance center. The DLOC is going to be a little more limited. It's going to be a little smaller, but we do know that our FEMA partners are going to try and have a presence there, because in the first wave, when people apply, sometimes they get, it's the classic government thing where it looks like you've been denied, but we're just asking for more information. So we encourage people to not panic and just ask how they can keep moving forward in the process. I also wanted to share with you an update regarding the Small Business Administration in this county, the presence and the impact that we've had as of yesterday. So we've had 315 applications received, 222 of them have been home loans, 81 have been business loans. Of that, 110 of them have already been approved. So people are well on their way towards getting some of the help that they need. So that's a little over a third, which is pretty phenomenal. So the total dollar amount so far is $5,174,900. That's since January, on or about January 24, when the center opened. So specific to the SBA loans, there are three, there are a couple of ways to apply for the disaster loan. One way is virtually at our website, disasterloanassistance.sba.gov, or by calling or emailing disastercustomer service@sba.gov. And the second way is by calling the 800 number, which is 800-659-2955. And as soon as we announce the location of the DLOC, that'll be another option for people to come visit. The hours are not as extensive as they were with the other location, which was pretty much from 8:00 in the morning until 7:00 at night. This one will be kind of a little closer in terms of more business hours, but there'll also be hours on the weekends, so help people. And the last thing I'd like to do is just, if there's anything I can do to further this outreach, if you know of any clubs or any organizations that would like a presentation by the SBA, whether it's a virtual one through Zoom or in person, we'd be more than happy to accommodate you. I know I gave you a lot of information, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer some.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Am I right?
I have a comment real quick, Mayor. George, thank you. I want to, I want to thank both you and Zabrina for reaching out to our council and being very communicative with questions that we may have, and inviting us to come and tour the disaster assistance facility that was created at the Vets Hall, and it was really quite a sight to see. All the organizations coming together to assist our community, it was just, it was a great, a great sight, and I appreciate all the hard work and effort that went into that. And this is great information for the continued effort, so I appreciate you coming here this evening to give us more concrete, detailed information for our community. Thank you.
Absolutely, and I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to present before this body.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we'll move into public comment. Excuse me, I'm going to start with the speaker slips I have, and then we'll be open to anyone who has not signed up. We'll start with Margaret Carmen. Margaret, followed by Ted Blocky.
Hi, my name is Margaret Carmen. I'm a resident of Morro Bay. Hello, everyone. I hear that tomorrow you're having a presentation by staff on Ethics in the Brown Act, and so I'm starting my talk with public service ethics are different. In public service, one must always remember in ethics that perception is as important as reality. It's better to err on the side of caution, and if in doubt, send it out. And this is straight from what you'll be having tomorrow at your lecture. So I recently learned that Councilmember Jen Ford works full-time as a senior field representative for California State Representative Don Addis, and I do understand that legal counsel has given her the okay. According to her job description, Ford will represent Addis at local government, community, and private interest group meetings, among other things. To me, these responsibilities could represent and do represent a serious conflict of interest with her work on our city council. One example of this conflict is that Addis has co-authored a bill that would accelerate the offshore wind industrialization of our beautiful waterfront. While Morro Bay's vision is detailed in the 2021 general plan, which I understand is the equivalent of our constitution, is that we remain a small oceanfront town where our natural environment is cherished and protected. These two visions are in direct opposition to each other. How can Councilman, Councilmember Ford honestly represent the interests of her employer, as well as those of the City of Morro Bay, when it comes to the proposed industrialization of the waterfront? I'm really in conflict about how she can work for Representative Addis and on our city council. And I honestly wish her the best in recusing when it's really, really necessary. However, that's a lot of recusing yourself when you look at like what all council member Addis wants and what many of us in this town wish to happen in terms of wind projects and lithium battery storage and et cetera. The conflicts just seem too substantial to mitigate with just an occasional recusal, especially in this time when Morro Bay is in the crosshairs of the state government's race to implement a very, what I consider, radical energy goals, which could lead to significant development of our harbor to serve corporate interests. Thank you.
Ted?
Thank you. I'm Ted Blockley. I'm from Los Osos and came at the suggestion of a local group opposed to the battery storage. So Battery Energy Storage System. This intended development is inconsistent with the surrounding area and the city general plan. I was a toddler at the time the defunct power plant and stacks were under construction. I'm not yet a historic relic myself. In those terms, this out-of-place bayside development seems like a footnote rather than a foregone conclusion. Vistra has requested a change to the city land use designations for this property. This should not be done for the benefit of the current landowner, to the perpetual detriment to the community. Morro Bay previously determined that the ultimate use of this land is for visitor-serving commercial. That well-considered determination should remain intact. The request for a zone change and general plan amendment over the entire property is troublesome, in light of the fact that a simple conditional use permit for a much smaller project would suffice. With the CUP, the existing underlying zoning remains intact, doesn't change. A zone change and general plan amendment will permanently and inconsistently classify all the land for heavy industrial use. Do not be swayed by talk of covenants and restrictions on these projects, on these parcels. Previous owners have made such agreements for their own reasons. These conditions of sale do not change the nature nor the scope of the city's powers. The city can and should uphold the existing land use designations regardless of the outcome of the landowner's present plan. Thank you.
George Shoemaker, followed by Linda Winters.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is George Shoemaker, and I'm here to speak about the transit stop. And I know that's an agenda item, but I do have an engagement a little bit later. I own the property right across the street at 745 Harbor. And looking through your consultant's report, I've received a copy of, I know that you have three proposed, or not proposed, but three possible sites. You have the existing site, you have a site just to the east of that, and then you have a site on the south end on Morro Bay Boulevard. The costs are pretty comparable on what was proposed on each one of those. The trade-offs in regards to loss of parking and that sort, those are pretty comparable. But there are some real differences that exist in regards to the existing site as it is. Now, most of you have probably driven by there, I don't know, at least once today, right? You're either down Morro Bay Boulevard, or you're down Harbor. And you understand that at times there's a fair amount of congestion that exists, particularly on Harbor, and particularly once there are events there at the IOF Hall. And there are usually meetings there that are there every day. And we have about four and a half parking spots in front of our house, and any given time at 12:30, they're all full. And yet, across the street on Morro Bay Boulevard, they're empty because people don't want to walk that far. You have, the current location really is not optimal, and particularly, you have an attractive nuisance with a shelter that's there. And I know the proposal is to change that shelter to have some see-through shelters so that some of the activities that take place there that aren't so desirable wouldn't necessarily be able to be done kind of as hidden as they currently are. And all you have to do is sit out in our front yard, and you can watch all kinds of things take place every day. And that's why I call it an attractive nuisance, and they tend to congregate around that location. Also, proximate to that location is the playground, and for safety reasons, rarely do you see repeat people at the playground. The playground is very underutilized, and there'll be people that go there, but again, you don't see repeat people at the playground. The south side is safer with benefits that exist way beyond just the playground area there. Again, parking is heavily utilized on Harbor, where it is not existent really at all on Morro Bay Boulevard, underutilized. Oh, thank you. So, I would just like to say, for public safety reasons, I think it's imperative that the idea of moving it to the south side would be much more desirable. Thank you.
I'm going to try and get through this. I want to thank the gentleman from the SBA, because I think he was talking directly to me. And I am one of the survivors of the flood in the mobile home parks here, right here in Morro Bay, and that's what I'm here to talk to you about. Tonight, I've been living in the same mobile home park for the last 29 years, and 28 of those years I have experienced, I have the dubious distinction of experiencing four floods, and I have survived all four of them. So, if you don't want to be around a natural disaster, stay away from Linda Winters. That's my advice to all of you. But in the big flood in 1995, my husband and I were managing a hotel up the street, right up here, El Morro Lodge, and we witnessed the flood in 95 from that viewpoint. And we saw the waters coming up and over Highway 1, and we saw the roads being closed off and CDF coming and rescuing cars that were down below. And when we got, finally, the waters cleared, we got to go down and purvey our homes, which we had lost our home, our little travel trailer that we were living in. So, we got the opportunity to start all over again, and FEMA was there spot-on to help save us. So, I will fast-forward to the flood in 2023, and thanks to the video that Scott Collins produced on January 24th, I got to witness the flood once again. And people have asked me, how was it different? It was the same horrific feeling. And, okay. Once again, we witnessed people that lost their homes, and once again, FEMA came in right off the bat. I cannot say enough about the City of Morro Bay and all the help that everybody gave us. And I do have to make a comment about the people who are complaining about the fact that the creeks weren't clean, there isn't a wall big enough to protect all of our property. I need to remind everybody that we are visitors here. We are all living in a flood plain, and we all have the responsibility, we have encroached on Mother Nature in a big kind of way. And quite frankly, we should all, we should all appreciate the fact that Mother Nature is going to take back what's hers, and we need to respect that, and I thank you all very much.
Thank you, Linda. John Solo, followed by Cindy Muir.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. It's been a long time since I stood up here, so thank you, staff. My name is John Solo. I'm a resident of Morro Bay and also the president of Rotary Club of Morro Bay, and I'm really enjoying my year being a president, to be honest with you. Service above self is Rotary motto, and is something that my family instilled in me at an early age. In fact, doing good for others was the key part of our cultured lifestyle, as we successfully blended two cultures when my family migrated from, to the United States from Turkey when I was 12 years old. As the horrific news of devastation of earthquake that shook Turkey and Syria came in, and events unfolded on the screen in front of me, I was gutted, thinking of my people, my friends, my family, my relatives, that are victims of such a strategy. Sadly, the number of injured dead and injured are growing by the hour. Many of the community members have asked me, what can we do to help? We feel distanced, yet want to reach out and to the victims and assist in some meaningful way. Therefore, we have created a way to, that we all care. Rotary Club of Morro Bay has established a mechanism to fund the Rotary Club of Ankara, which is the capital of Turkey, which is currently leading the charge of bringing aid to those victims. Rotary Club of Ankara, which is the largest club in that part of the world, will collect donations from the International Rotary and use the funds exclusively to the needs of the earthquake-ravaged areas. Please join me and contribute whatever you can, cash, check, or credit card, through the Morro Bay Rotary website. The donation link appears on the left side of the web. The website is www.morrobayrotary.org. Thank you for your support, and God bless everyone. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Muir, and I live in Morro Bay. The goal for the city council is to follow the general plan for the City of Morro Bay, adopted in May of 2021, that cost $3 million and took three years to put together. Do not change the general plan or the zoning. It was put together with consideration and input from the people of Morro Bay. I just heard last week that Councilmember Ford is working for former Councilmember Dawn Addis. We all know where Addis stood on issues regarding the proposed battery storage, wants to promote industrial growth, and commercialize our area in ways the general public does not want. This seems to be a glaring conflict of interest in regard to Councilmember Jen Ford, who gets her paycheck from newly-elected Assemblymember Dawn Addis. This is a problem. It's a huge problem. This seems, the question of integrity of the last city council and mayor were looming large over their decisions regarding Vistra's proposal. The waters are muddy again. Section 1090 of the Government Code prohibits conflicts of interest for public officials. The consequence can be heavy fines or even criminal conviction. Councilmember Jen Ford is compromised and must recuse herself on any and all discussions and voting regarding the Vistra proposal or Harbor front issues. She is working for someone who wants to see our bay and estuary turned into an industrial seaside city. This goes directly against Morro Bay residents and the general plan for the City of Morro Bay. Appearances matter. This is unethical. We cannot have another corrupted city council. Once again, as a resident of Morro Bay, do not change the zoning that has been put in place. And also, I have a couple of seconds left. I have this article, I can submit it. It's written by a criminal defense attorney, Ken White. It's on the Government Code, Section 1090. Prohibiting conflicts of interest is now even more of a hazard for the unwary. And in here, it states, "California official or employee might violate Section 1090 even if the public entity they work for and its attorneys told them that their conduct was lawful and not in violation of Section 1090." It also, okay. Would you like me to submit this? Okay.
Thank you. Next up is going to be Ann Johnson, and then Erin Oaks.
My name's Ann Johnson. I live at Silver City Mobile Home Park. I have to say before, I wrote out these comments before I came, of course, tonight, and I spoke to a representative of Dawn Addis, who's been kind of mean-mouthed here tonight, it seems to me. She was a very lovely person, and she gave me a lot of information. I just wanted to preface my remarks with that. Okay. City council members and citizens, my name is Ann Johnson. I spoke at the last city council meeting, addressing the issue of flooding in our city. Since that meeting, I have taken it upon myself to educate myself about the possibility of future debris removal from the stream bed running through Morro Bay to prevent a future flood related to buildup of debris. As I have discovered, this is a complex issue involving multiple private owners of sections of the stream bed, the California Fishing Game Commission, the permitting process through them for debris removal, the funding of such permitting and debris removal. I have spoken to representatives of the California Fishing Game, the U.S. Fishing Game, Salud Carbalha's office, and Dawn Addis's office. As you all probably know, Dawn Addis is a citizen of Morro Bay, still having a home here, plus she has a history as a member of the city council. I was informed that she understands the impact of the flood on our town, and each of us affected by the flooding. I was told that she understands the complexity of the issue, and I was assured that she is working to coordinate whatever state agencies available that can assist us, not only in permitting, but also funding of debris removal. I stand here tonight with a fresh appreciation of the difficulty of governing a city and of the working, of the work necessary to maintain the safety of all the citizens of the city. I wish to thank you all in advance for the work I know you are doing to maintain and improve the health and safety of all the citizens of Morro Bay. I now have renewed faith that this flooding scenario will not be repeated. Thank you for all your work to prevent such a repeat occurrence. It's my basic philosophy to expect the best from people, that they don't have nefarious underlying reasons for their behavior, and I would hope that all of the citizens of Morro Bay would think the best of each other and expect that people are operating with the best interests of the citizens of Morro Bay. Uppermost. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the council and staff. My name is Erin Oaks of Morro Bay. Last year, I filed a Fair Political Practices Commission complaint against Councilmember Jen Ford for conflict of interest issues involving her business interests with then-mayor John Heading. I repeatedly and publicly called for Ms. Ford to cooperate fully with the FPPC investigation. Last month, I voluntarily withdrew my complaint in hopes of a fresh new start with the new city council. The FPPC informed me after my withdrawal that they dismissed the complaint due to what they described as insufficient evidence. When I asked the FPPC about their determination, they informed me that Ms. Ford was, quote, "not cooperative," end quote. Their words, not mine. Since then, I've learned new information. Recently, Ms. Ford accepted a full-time position as Senior Field Representative for Assemblywoman Dawn Addis with a salary of $57,600 to $136,800 with health benefits. Councilmembers currently earn only a stipend of $1,000 a month. Money talks. Assemblywoman Addis sits on the Natural Resources Committee, which is expected to oversee proposed legislation that actually fast-tracks infrastructure, including battery storage facilities. Ms. Addis also serves on the Fisheries and Agriculture Joint Committee, which is currently reviewing legislation in support of wind farm energy off the central coast. The city council is expected to review and vote on the proposed Vistra Battery Storage Facility and-- facility and city business pertaining to the offshore wind farm in development. How will Councilwoman Jen Ford vote on these issues? Will she accuse, recuse herself, just like she did a whopping nine times in her first nine months? Given she never disclosed or recused herself when her business, Rock Harbor Marketing, took on Friends of the Morro Bay Harbor Department as a client while she supported their controversial Measure B 22, it's unclear. And how often must one recuse themselves before their seat on the council looks like an empty seat? All the while, Ms. Ford runs her business at leases city-owned property at below-market rates. Interesting. And as the co-founder of Women's March Slow, Ms. Ford tends to know a thing or two about privilege and entitlement. Due to the overwhelming appearance of an actual conflicts of interest and the dire pay-to-play implications of intertwining city business with her full-time position at Assemblywoman Addis's office, I call on Ms. Ford to immediately resign from the city council. Should she not resign, an ethics inquiry will be prepared for the district attorney. You can't serve two masters. You should know better than that.
Next up, excuse me, I have a speaker slip from engineer, no name, regarding the battery project. Thank you.
Greetings and good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I have some information here I'm going to provide largely as an informational purpose. My background is in mechanical engineering, production and development engineering with focus on chemistry and thermodynamics. I prefer not to provide my name today because as I understand it, people who have spoken here previously in regards to the battery project are being threatened with lawsuits. I would prefer to avoid that. So, beginning, I'm going to talk about the hydrogen fluoride gas, which is one of the gases which are emitted by lithium ion battery fires. I have a study here in the Journal of Nature in 2017. They did a study in regards to the amount of hydrogen fluoride emitted. And they found that it's quite high. To give you an idea of the background, NIOSH has a safety level of immediately dangerous to life and health for hydrogen fluoride of about 30 parts per million. They did their study and they found that it reaches over 200 parts per million in less than 10 minutes. That's something that is definitely concerning. To give you an idea of how dangerous hydrogen fluoride is, the same NIOSH levels for the IDLH, something you might be more familiar with in the public mind, is hydrogen cyanide. That is considered immediately dangerous to life and health at 50 parts per million, which is higher than the hydrogen fluoride. So I thought I would point that out. The amount of kilograms of hydrogen fluoride released from battery fires are also mentioned in this study, which you might be interested in comparing to the batteries that are recommended for the storage facility. In addition, I also want to point out that lithium ion fires are not a rare occurrence. The Fire Department of New York, City of New York, last year noted that there were over 200 fires which occurred in the City of New York, which were directly related by investigation to lithium batteries involved in small bicycles with electric batteries on them. They are recommending that they be banned at a federal level. There were 147 injuries and six fatalities from those fires. The National Department, National Transportation Safety Board, to give you an idea of these fires, they did some investigations. And one particular vehicle that caught on fire from lithium ion battery was quite interesting. It burned on the scene. They put out the fire. They then, while they were wrenching, winching it onto the truck, to the tow truck, it caught on fire again. They had to put it out again. They had to escort it one mile away, or excuse me, one hour away with a police and fire department escort to the towing yard. Five days later, it caught fire again. Firefighters' clothing contamination, if you'll just allow me just a moment further, please. Firefighters' clothing contamination, to give you an idea that this is a persistent contamination, there was a study done in the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health. This notes that firefighters' clothing can be contaminated by toxins from lithium ion battery fires and that these can cause health issues later just re-wearing the same clothing. So there's a lot of issues that I think need to be brought up. I've got some further information here I can submit to the, to the council for review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Rachel Wilson and then Barry Brannan.
Welcome, or, thank you, members of the city council, new mayor. My name is Rachel Wilson and I'm just going to let you know that at the November meeting with Vistra, I was threatened with a lawsuit if I mentioned the word terrorism or anything negative by an official from Vistra. So if you noticed, I have not been speaking out on that because I personally was threatened. Anyway, what I want to tell you is, right now, everyone is saying, oh, my gosh, we need to make Morro Bay green. Morro Bay is already green. We are stewards of a unique ecosystem. Green refers to a world in which natural resources, including oceans, lands, and forests, are sustainably managed and conserved. It is a world of healthy ecosystems. Morro Bay Estuary is green. We are one of the most significant wetlands on the California coastline and in the world. We are a link to migratory birds. We are of vital importance to the healthy, green ecosystem of the world. We are part of preserving climate change. We are unique among migratory birds. I thought this was really interesting. Out of 963 sites in the United States, according to the Audubon Society, we are number five in migratory birds. Imagine what pilings being driven into the ground as we create the battery storage plant, the vibrations it's going to do to that migration. Imagine if our water becomes contaminated. Imagine if the hydrogen fluoride gas the fellow before mentioned happens to come out of that best plant. We are home to lots of endangered species. I love the California black rail because it looks sort of blue to me, the peregrine falcon, the brown pelican, Swainson's hawk, southern sea otter. We are home to one of the largest colonies of sea otters. That makes us very green. And the western snowy plover. What is green? Our local businesses are green. They know that if they do not take care of our environment, of our bay, that our tourist industry will not thrive. Their survival depends on protecting our ecosystem. Their stockholders are community members who live and raise their families here. Our estuary also, I'm a teacher, educates the next generation of green scientists. As my students looked out at otters, as my students looked out at the animals in the estuary, they said, wow, we don't want to use plastics anymore. May I finish? Just one second. Next one. What's not green? Take a look. This is what happens when out-of-town people come into our community. They abandon. They leave the mess. One last slide? Location, location, location. Not green is an environmentally unique habitat. If they build this in our bay, think about what the dredging is going to do to our otter habitat. Green, Morro Bay staying green means we say yes. Maybe we like wind energy, but you know what? Bringing it into our green estuary means that our estuary will become brown. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. No clapping, no clapping. Wave, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Barry Brannan, Morro Bay. I've been an active businessman in this town a long time, and I know a lot of you people are associated with business. And I know that every time if someone does some development down on the Embarcadero or whatever, there's a pretty substantial parking and lieu fee that's requested, requested, like a tax is requested. These parking and lieu fees have been quite large over the years if you accumulate them. And recently, I haven't seen a summation of the parking and lieu fees. And obviously, if I was a Embarcadero Lassie, parking, I know I went to a Chamber of Commerce thing and they were, biggest problem they had is parking for their employees, parking for their customers. So some years ago, if you've been around long enough, there was an RV park down on the Embarcadero. And the city very smartly bought that RV park. And that's our free public parking lot down there right now. That serves all these people that come to all the nice shops down on the Embarcadero. Now, in closed session, I read the minutes and there's a proposal for a marketplace development there. Now, to me, you have a, the city has a contract with the business people to provide parking. And unless that marketplace leaves that parking place there, or better enhances it, basically, the city has reneged on their contract by collecting all these parking and lieu fees and not applied them correctly. And I think if I were a businessman, and I'm not down there, I think I'd file a suit. I say, wait a minute, that's, you're cheating me. You said you were going to provide parking and now you're going to allow some development on the places where people park? And I think rather than that, the parking and lieu fees should be focused on taking the old RV park, current parking, and see what you can do to enhance it. A simple proposal is a multi-lever park, level parking garage. That could be a paid parking garage that could be used on that property. You could be enter off Embarcadero Street, you could exit off the Embarcadero, you could use the parking and lieu fees that must be hidden somewhere in the city coffers, I don't know. And you could, and if you really were smart about it, you'd make that an enterprise zone, just like we have enterprise zones for harbor, we have enterprise zone for the sewer and water. You could make an enterprise zone for a parking facility there that could actually generate some income that then could be used to retire the bond that would be necessary to make the parking down there. But parking and lieu fees are a, a promise the city made. We'll take your money, substantial money, and we'll provide parking for your, your customers and your employees. And I frankly have not been able to see that, and I'd like to have this at least looked at. There are all kinds of parking studies I went through. I found three, 2007, 2011, substantial parking. We need parking. Please, please look at this matter. Thank you.
Next up is Riggs, followed by Terry Simons.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm an engineer graduated from Cal Poly. I've been a consultant engineer on a number of wind and, and power generation systems. I've worked in a lot of alternative energy. Wind on land is, the ROI on a, on a generator that, that works and maintains generation is actually a pretty good deal. However, the failure rate of wind machines are tremendous. What it takes to recycle a generator, the blades alone, oftentimes, they dig huge holes and just bury the blades. And, and the energy that it takes to make those blades, some of these are 150 feet long and weigh 20,000 pounds. It's absolutely astounding, the energy that goes into manufacturing, transporting and installing these blades. The engineer before me covered the battery issue. This is a tremendous issue. Not four months ago, the sister plant to Morro Bay, Moss Landing, just had a lithium battery fire. It's a big deal. It can destroy a vehicle in, in less than a minute. And it doesn't go out. Using water is about all they have on, on a fire truck, and it is a horrendous experience. Oftentimes, they don't have enough water because it's an electrical fire and you shouldn't be using water for an electrical fire, not to mention all of the gases that are expelled, expelled from the disaster. Lithium is a precious metal on the planet. It is very rare. We have very little of it in the United States. And in third-world countries, little kids are out barefoot and their job all day long is to dig up this nasty metal and it is very poisonous. It is not good for the human body. It's crazy what is being done. I don't really understand why all this money and energy is put into lithium batteries. In the end, this is just going to be a flash in the fire because these batteries will not last for any length of time in the real world. There are much better forms of mechanical storage that can be used and utilized for storing energy. Electrically, this is a disaster. It really is. Not to mention, on, on the ecological end of things, the vibration of these wind machines transmit all kinds of acoustic energy into the ocean and this is very dysfunctional for whales, whales well-being. Thank you for listening to me.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Terry Simons. I sent a letter to you all, basically summarizing remarks I intended to make tonight. Those have been preempted. Happy or sorry to say. I'm happy to hear that our water reclamation center is going to have an opening. I hope you're going to be serving some of the water that you're reclaiming through that plant for our benefit at that opening. I would love to come and drink some, quite frankly. In researching the ongoing desire of the city to reclaim the water, I've come across a couple of items. And one has to do with the status of the easement from Vistra going into our future, one of our proposed reclaim sites. I have not been able to find any evidence that that easement has actually been perfected and delivered. And the main reason I was looking into the easement was because I've been watching the changing horizon on federal and state regulation in terms of re-injecting water. And looking at what seems to be coming is that the quality of the water that we're proposing to be injecting into the well field is higher quality than the water that's there now. So what's going to have to happen is we're going to have to pre-process the water coming out of the wells that we're now trying to clear up with this injected water. And I wonder if anybody's done a cost-benefit analysis, it may actually be easier, cheaper to create the facilities at the water reclamation facility to take the very close deportable water that's coming out of that plant and bring it to tap-grade water. And I would encourage the council to direct our engineering and public works people to look that direction up because we've already made a lot of mistakes in the whole water reclamation program because of bad concepts or poor planning. And I would hate to see us go down a rabbit hole of another wasted enterprise when we could literally be treating the water at the new facility. And just as an aside, I've got 47 seconds left. Jen, I apologize. I think that the comments that you had to endure tonight were inappropriate. I've served on public bodies. I have always been in conflict with many issues. And I know you well enough to know that you have the personal ability to discriminate between what you have a conflict of interest with and don't. And I would support your effort to continue to retain your seat. Thank you.
Next up is Karen Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Quite a few things that were said tonight, I'm in agreement with, and I don't think it's really necessary for us to regurgitate and for me to say the same thing over and again. With Councilwoman Jen Ford- With Councilwoman Jen Ford, she knows how I feel about the position that she holds in the conflict, and I hope that she, I hope that you take into consideration the concerns that people have about the possibility of recusing yourself. And when you came to see us on Friday at that meeting, I got the personal opinion that you really do have this town's best interests at heart, and I, and I believe that you will use that in your decision-making when you go forward from here. As for the storm that we had, something, I really do think it was a gift from God. The proposed battery plant was a mud hole. It was, it was, I mean, it was, it was underground, it was underwater, and we know that lithium batteries don't do well with water, may not be a really good location. Okay? The other thing that storm showed us as a city was the ability to be able to evacuate if there was a battery storage plant accident. It's, the way we're set up right now is really, really impossible. So how can you, as a city council, assure us that our safety would be paramount when we couldn't even deal with a, with a simple flood? So I wanted you to consider that. I'm not here to argue one way or the other about the, the importance of green energy. I think the location is a really, really bad choice, so I ask that you keep the, the city's constitution as is and find another location. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I'm out of speaker slips, so we will open the floor to public comment for items not on the agenda.
Good evening, Mayors and Council. Happy Valentine's Day. Paul Donnelly, resident of Morro Bay.
A couple of weeks ago, I read an article in the New Times about the Los Osos Community Services District.
And their so-called water resiliency Entertai project that proposes to tap into the main water supply pipeline for the city of Morro Bay, named the state water pipeline. The Los Osos Community Services District had an agenda item on February 2nd regarding this, and the details are found within their staff report. It's their staff report. The staff report also had a map of the Entertai pipeline project they want to do, and the location where they proposed to tap into that pipe was not designed for that sort of feature. And I will severely compliment.
Reminds integrity of the pipe itself. I can explain why, if anybody's interested. Their proposed pipe is larger than the state water pipe, so they could take all of the city's water if desired. Los Osos did not participate in the state water project and certainly did not assist with the cost of the Chorral Valley Water Transmission Pipeline, the Coastal Branch Aqueduct, or the Poloneo Pass Treatment Plant. The pipes were not sized for more than what had been contracted by the agencies who requested state water at that time. The last nine miles of the Chorral Valley Water Transmission Pipeline beyond the turnout to the Men's Colony was solely dedicated to the Morro Bay and to no one else. The community of Morro Bay paid 100% of that last nine miles of pipe. Most of you were probably, were not around in 1991 when the community voted for the participation in state water project, and I knew Carla was here. The special election ballot measure was court ordered because the city council at that time refused to allow the community to vote on the matter. On December 17th, 1991, Measure G passed, and in doing so, the city participated in the project planning and construction, asking for a minimum of 1,313 acre feet per year of state water. It was codified as ordinance 411. It has been the city's main supply now for over 25 years. In 1994, Measure J went before the voters of Morro Bay, asking to relieve the city from participation in the project. Measure J failed. How is it that Los Osos has gotten this far on their Entertai project? At their February 2nd meeting, they authorized up to $96,000 to do the environmental review process. They could not have pursued this without cooperation from Morro Bay, and the city does not have the authorization to sell our state water to them. Who is doing this, and which community do they serve? Thank you.
Good evening. 10 years ago, on this very day, February 14th, 2013, I sat at a JPA meeting in Cayucus with my husband, if you can consider that a Valentine's, you know, togetherness. So, yeah. So, and it was a joint meeting to talk about the, a new sewer plant. And we've come a long way since then. Fast forward to 2018, Corolo wrote to then Public Works Director, a, an email. The title is, "Proposal to Provide Program Management for a New Water Reclamation Facility." I'm going to read you one of the bullet points in their proposal. Unmatched technical expertise involving the most complex aspect of your project. While the industry views potable, or potable reuse as a new concept, Corolo and specifically Andy Salvason have been working since 1998 to define the regulations and treatment processes necessary to ensure the protection of public health that owners and the Department of Drinking Water demand. Our deep knowledge will help Morro Bay deliver the most cost-effective project that will both meet discharge regulations and secure the long-term health of the community's water project. So my question now is, how did we now end up with a different contractor, Confluence, I believe Confluence Engineering Solutions, that we have paid approximately, I don't know, $645,000 or more? What are that contractor's guidelines? I mean, specific qualifications, that consultant? Because Corolo came to the council, or to the city with a proposal, and it was accepted with their A-team. And if you want to read the whole thing, many pages, this man, Mr. Salvason's resume is right there, along with everybody else on the A-team for Corolo. So why did we not continue with this man's expertise, technical expertise? I wish I went faster than I thought. So, back to, now I would like to move to streets. The street signs on Quintana, I've spoken about this before, since I heard that the paving is done. The street sign on Quintana and Las Tunas has been down for months. I just noticed that the other day, there is a street sign there, and it says Quintana. However, it's facing Las Tunas. And there's no stop sign on that pole. It's still on an A-frame, and that A-frame is actually on Quintana as you enter Las Tunas. And if you're not familiar with that, you might drive around it. And then, just one real quick, I would like to know if the turn lane down Quintana Business Section will be added when the, when the paving is done and the striping gets started? Because there's always been a left-hand turn lane into the Business Section. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Nicole Dorfman. Happy Valentine's Day. Glad to be sharing it with all of you. I've lived in Morro Bay for about 15 years. So I figure almost everyone in the front of the room has read this REACH report titled, "Central Coast Emerging Industries Waterfront Sighting and Infrastructure Study," that was published in December of 2022. For those in the back of the room or listening from home, if you're interested to know how the proposed wind farms off our coast could impact Morro Bay, this is essential reading. According to the introduction, the report was created to support the growth of the floating wind farm industries on the central coast. It was sponsored by San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara Counties, as well as the city of Morro Bay. It's interesting to note that Morro Bay is the only city across the two counties to formally participate, even though suitability was evaluated, for other locations, including Cayucus, Pismo Beach, Avila Beach, Golita, and the city of Santa Barbara. Not only did Morro Bay contribute $25,000, but we also contributed city resources in the services of our harbor director, as well as that of our previous mayor, John Heading, and current city council member, Jen Ford. The section on Morro Bay envisions a significant industrialization of our waterfront to support the floating offshore wind industry. Keep in mind that according to the report, this industrialization would be required to support the construction and long-term maintenance of the windmills that, in quotes, "are among the largest structures ever constructed, standing taller than the Golden Gate Bridge and are affixed to a floating foundation that can be larger than a baseball field." Okay, let that sink in. Since the public has been kept in the dark about this study and didn't even learn about it until it was complete from an article in the Tribune at that, I'm hoping you can answer the following questions. Number one, how was it decided that Morro Bay would sponsor the study and contribute $25,000 along with staff and council resources? Number two, why was the public never informed of this decision and not allowed to participate? Three, why were there no updates or disclosures of ex parte communications by the mayor, city council member, or harbor director? Four, is this legal? Five, is it ethical? I realize you can't answer all of the questions here, but I really would like a written response at your nearest convenience. It is clear that this matter is of great importance to many members of the community, and that it has tremendous implications to our continued way of life and the health and vibrancy of our local environment, which is invaluable and has no price tag. Thank you.
So much knowledge in the last hour. I'm going to talk about process, and before I do, I want to mention something that has been mentioned before, and that is about, as much as the council members offer email addresses and phone numbers for the benefit of the people, or as much as the community has, we have no form where we could see those email addresses or phone numbers where we could write them down. And I know we've talked about it before, but it really seems to me that if we had some kind of projector where people could put that up, or where you as council members could put that on the, the TV, that that would be really helpful. And so I'm encouraging you to continue to pursue that because it hasn't happened yet. My real reason for speaking this evening is about process, and I've seen a progression of what I perceive as a downward spiral in how we, as the public and as the council, are receiving information. Before the end of the year, the council dealt with a, an appeal, and you all had pictures of that house, and the public asked to see what it was that you were ruling on, and we were refused a picture. Okay, at that point, you had knowledge, we didn't. Okay, then, last month in January, you had another appeal where there was a legal document that was relevant to your decision-making, but it was not in your staff report. So this time, you're losing information. There was a link, but when the question was asked, how many of you had looked at the link, not a majority had. So now you're getting a little bit less information. Okay, now, tonight, you're talking about the hub of the transportation at the city park. There is no design either for you to look at or for the public to look at, there's not even a link. I offered a link to you from the bid package in my comments. So this is the progression that I'm seeing, that the public and the decision-makers are receiving less and less information, so you're less and less informed. So my concern is, I elected you guys to make decisions. I did not elect staff. They're here to supply information to you so you can make the decisions. And so my concern is that you not abdicate your authority, and that it would be like Assemblymember Addis asking her aide, Representative Ford, to make a decision for her. That's not what we're about. We elected Addis to make that decision, not her helpers. So I would urge you to make sure you're getting your information.
Anyone else for public comment?
Natalia Mersoian, Morro Bay. And there were just a couple of things I wanted to bring up, because I think it's really important, especially about the battery fires and the possible dangers involved in that plant. And that is two things that were in the paper, but you wouldn't know from the reporting that they really involved. The hydrogen chloride, I think that's the bad chemical involved that causes such precipitous fires. And one was in the paper because it was litigated recently, and it was a dive boat down around Santa Barbara, I believe, where something like 12 to 14 passengers perished while the crew all escaped. You may remember that. I didn't know until this last week that it involved a battery fire. And that is because that chemical is so volatile, and the fire is so deadly. And I remember that one of the individuals, they were all ages, but one of them was a child, 12, 14, eight, somewhere. And there, it was a horrible tragedy. But the point is, they happen very quickly. And the other one just happened. It's that train that derailed in Ohio, was it Ohio? That was hydrogen chloride that was burning, and that they, the headline was, they were releasing the chemical there on the spot, basically because there was nothing else they could do. So it's, it's pretty horrible stuff, and I hope all your consciences are strong enough, if we have any kind of issues in the future, to live with yourselves if something like that is installed here and some tragedy occurs. And the other thing, shifting gears, is the, the bus stop. I like the bus stop just the way it is. I'm sure it, it's been there a while. It could use a little, probably TLC, but I don't think we need to spend a bunch of money there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? That hasn't already spoken.
This is a different topic?
You have to wait. You only get one crack at it.
Happy Valentine's Day. You all look beautiful. I'm so proud of how beautiful our council is. And anyway, I got a little, little excited when I heard somebody say, I want to talk about stop signs, but I think there's another way I can talk about, another avenue, so I won't bother with you guys right now. I did just want to say a little something. I appreciate what others have said regarding the possible conflict of interest for Jen. And I was at a, a group meeting representing a bigger group in Morro Bay, and Jen reassured us that she would not be swayed, you know, by Dawn and her, you know, working for her, being her boss. And I told Jen that I believe her, that I really do believe that that's her intent, is to represent the citizens of Morro Bay. is to represent the citizens of Morro Bay. But something worried me. And I know that our subconscious has a lot to do with some of our immediate decisions, and sometimes we don't want it to, but sometimes it happens. And when Jen shared with us that when she moved here, she was moving away from essentially pollution in Bakersfield, I believe, for her kids. And she happened to move here right around the same time that Dawn Addis did, and they have kids, and they worked in the school and built a really strong bond. And then they began to work on the Women's March, and they are co-founders. And their emotional bond for that cause is probably greater than what they even realize. And then, and then working for your boss also is, it just plays on your subconscious. And I feel like there's just this very, very strong perception of a conflict of interest. Dawn, it's my understanding Dawn Addis is working day and night on a bill to fast-forward green energy, to fast-forward wind farms, to, you know, get all that running strong. And our little city is in that mix. And the way that you guys vote is really big. And the citizens of Morro Bay have said, hey, 19% of us wanted to change our mayor, and it happened. And then three of our council members who were running in a candidate forum, they all shared with us their desire not to have the big industry on the waterfront. And two did not really want to say yea or nay. Well, the three out received votes, over 2,000 votes more than the two. So the city has spoken about that, and I'm just really hoping to see Jen vote more often for the city and not vote how Mayor Heading was leading you guys. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. AGP, do we have anyone on the line?
We have, we have one call-in. The number is 581-365-892. So I'm going to allow you to speak, and if you can press star six to unmute and also state your name before you talk. You've been allowed to speak on my end. Caller, if you are there, please press star six.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, hi, this is Tim Mahoney, Southern California Gas Company, here tonight to provide a SoCal gas bill update. I know that this has been top of mind of many customers who may have received the January natural gas bill that was much higher than they expected. Well, market prices for natural gas have dropped significantly for February and March when compared to prices in January, but the western region will still see increased prices, which are higher than last year. The core procurement rate for natural gas changes each month and reflects the price that SoCal gas pays for natural gas for residents and business. So SoCal gas does not set the price for the natural gas that the customers receive. Natural gas prices are determined by national and regional markets, and we buy this natural gas in those markets on behalf of the residential and small business customers, and the cost of the gas is not marked up by SoCal gas. So we do not make a profit from the cost of the commodity price. But I do have other good news. The California Public Utilities has approved the acceleration of the California Climate Credit for SoCal gas customers in response to the high gas prices and the very, very cold weather that we've been experiencing. So residential customers will receive a credit of $50.77 on their February and March bills, which is always good news. So we've also delayed collection activities. SoCal gas has recently donated $1 million to the Natural Gas Assistance Fund. So if there are income-qualified customers in Morro Bay, they should go online to get that assistance at www.socalgas.com/assistance. So lastly, let me just conclude by saying, to help our customers reduce your energy, well, I'm encouraging everybody to lower your thermostats three or five degrees, health permitting, possibly wash clothes in cold water, reduce the temperature on the water heater, and if you can limit the use of non-essential natural gas appliances such as spas and pool heaters and things of that nature, that would be beneficial to your monthly bill. So I'm hoping that folks will just have a better February bill because prices are coming down. Thank you.
AGP, do we have anyone else?
There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. I bet he doesn't know how cold it is out tonight. With that, I'm going to bring it back to council. Thank you all for all the public comments. There was a lot, and we are going to move on.
Mayor Wixson, may I address a couple of, or a couple of things that were said tonight? Is that okay? Can I address those and ask our attorney also to help clarify?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try to make it quick because I know we need to get through. So I, you know, all comments are important to me, whether they're feel-good comments or, you know, not the contrary. And I always say this, and I will stick to it. I appreciate all comments that are made, and I appreciate everyone who takes the time to come to these meetings, to attend, give your opinions, give feedback on what's happening in our city, provide emails, phone calls, ask for coffee dates, whatever it is, however it is that you reach out to us. I do appreciate it, even if it's something that I may not necessarily agree with. So I just want to put that out there. One of the things I want to address is the concern about my position, working for the state of California, for the Assembly, and also being your council member. I can tell you from the bottom of my heart, and you can choose to believe this if you so choose, I would never have taken that position on if I thought that it would compromise my position as your council member. I made sure as soon as I was given the offer to check, first of all, if it was legal, and I'll refer to our attorney here in just a second on that. But the first and foremost is to make sure that that was a legal thing that I could do. The second thing was to make sure that if I were to take on that position, that I would still be able to make a lot of decisions for our city. I would never want to take on a position that prohibited me from ever voting on anything because that's what you elected me to do, was to make decisions on behalf of the city. Another that has been pointed out is that I, you know, should recuse myself if I need to, if there is a conflict of interest. And I can tell you right now, as was pointed out, I've had to recuse myself before because of the business that I own. And so I'm very familiar with the process. I do my homework before I come to the meetings. I make sure I don't have a conflict of interest, and if I do, I definitely step off the dais and I make sure that I don't participate in that conversation. I hope that I don't have to do that often because, like I said, you hired me to do the job, and I don't want to have to walk off the job often. So the second item was the comment about the FPPC violation that was reported and was cleared. I want to say that I was completely cooperative with the FPPC. There was never any questions that were asked that were unanswered. And I also would like for our city attorney to clarify what the, what the ruling was that came from the FPPC, if that's, if you have that available. So I, before I hand it off to the city attorney, I just want to put it out there. If any of you have more concerns or want more clarification on what it means for me to have both roles, please reach out to me. My email is jford, J-F-O-R-D, at morrobayca.gov. Reach out to me, set up a time, I'll meet with you. As mentioned this evening, you know, I spent a couple hours meeting with some of you that were here not long ago. Being a city council member is my first priority. It's definitely my priority. It always has been and it always will be. You have that promise for me. And so if there's fear that I'm going to abandon my position, that not only was I appointed to do first and then elected to continue to do so, if there's concern, please reach out to me so that we can have a more one-on-one or whatever, you know, personal conversation. So I did say more than, it was kind of a little more long-winded than I, sorry for taking up so much time, but just really quickly, if the city attorney, Chris Newmeyer, can clarify the two items, you know, the legalities of being able to do both roles and then also the FPPC ruling?
Sure. So speaking to the FPPC complaint made some time ago by a resident in Morro Bay, the FPPC's conclusion was that there was no evidence to substantiate the claim, so they dismissed it. And that was it for that complaint. In regards to holding the position, being an Assembly Field Rep and being a council member, I was asked quite some time ago to look into that, and part of that process was I talked to the chief counsel for the Assembly Legislative Ethics Committee, this attorney who provides for ethics checks on the Assembly level for the state. He told me that it's not uncommon throughout the state for there to be an Assembly Field Rep or a Senate Field Rep and for someone to hold local elected office. He pointed me to Government Code 8924, which expressly provides that there is not a statutory conflict inherent in being an employee of the State Assembly and being an elected local official. Also, what was reviewed was whether or not these positions are incompatible as a matter of law. Review of Government Code 1090, 1099, 8920, the Political Reform Act, and common law doctrine. It concluded that these are not incompatible positions. There will be times, I advised Councilmember Ford, where it would be appropriate for her to recuse herself, but inherently, these positions are not incompatible, and that was confirmed by the chief counsel for the Assembly Legislative Ethics Committee.
Thank you, City Attorney Chris Newmeyer.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on the consent agenda items, A1 through A6? No. AGP, anyone on the line?
There are no raised hands in the queue.
Sorry, Nicole.
That's quite all right. Sorry, I know I was just up here. I'm sorry to take up time, but I won't take up too much here. I wish to speak on item A6, which is continued resolution-making findings related to continued existence of a state of emergency due to COVID-19 and the reauthorization for public health and safety. Come on, folks. The emergency that we were in expired already. So what you're doing now is you're making a new emergency. And if you do this, if you decide to do this, I think you really need to tell us what that emergency is. What is the data? What are the metrics by which we are in an emergency? I just looked today on the slow website where they have all the stats about COVID. At this point in time, there are a total of eight people in the hospital with COVID. Now, that doesn't even mean that they're sick from COVID, as Dr. Anthony Fauci specified when he was speaking December 2021. When he was asked about rising number of child COVID hospitalizations, he said, and I quote, "Many of them are hospitalized with COVID as opposed to because of COVID. They may go in for a broken leg or appendicitis or something like that. So it is overcounting the number of people who are hospitalized with COVID as opposed to because of COVID." Okay, so that just clears up. There are eight people in the hospital who happened to test positive for COVID. I don't think any of them are in the ICU. That's number one. Number two, our city is going about just like normal. I went to, since your last resolution, I went to two wonderful meetings, events with the Chamber of Commerce. People were eating and drinking, having a great time. Once, I sat at a table with Councilmember Barton. Another time, I sat with the mayor. It was wonderful. I was so glad to do that. I spoke with the head of the Parks and Rec. I was told everything is completely back to normal, the kids' part, the seniors' part. I've been to my son's basketball game. It's a full house at Looms. Everybody's having a great time screaming and yelling. We are not in a public health emergency, folks. And I did see that what was written on the resolution is that in order for there, for you to say that there's a public health emergency, you're basically saying that we are all now in danger, that it is not safe to be here in person. So I think we all know that that is not the case. So I beg you to be honest. If you want to have a state of emergency for some other reason, then you need to tell us that. But otherwise, it's like the boy who cried wolf. And the lack of trust in public institutions is growing in our country, and when our public leaders claim that there's an emergency, a public health emergency, when we in our lives know that to not be true, then it really creates mistrust of the whole institution. So thank you for your consideration.
Terry Simons, once again, I guess I'm going to speak on A6. I think that the discussion on this is misguided because of the misnomer of the ordinance. I've dug into it. I realized that it was originally based on a governor's order, but perhaps it could be restructured just simply to be a change of city code. Because when I look at what's being proposed, what's really being proposed is an opportunity for members of this council, when out of the area, either sick or caring for a sick relative or friend, to be able to function as a council member via alternative methods. I think it's unfortunate that this has been couched with this whole COVID frenzy, and I think perhaps this would be a more palatable modification of city ordinance if it were taken away from the whole COVID discussion and brought in to be just a simple modification of city ordinance to allow for the modification so that members of this council, when necessary, can come in via Zoom to fulfill their functions rather than have to be absent. Just my thoughts. Thank you.
That's, that's exactly right, Mr. Simons. Betty Winholz, speaking to A6, and I would wholeheartedly support Ms. Dorfman's position and encounter to Mr. Simmons that the governor is already allowed for that. You already have the right to zoom in and do whatever you need to do. In fact, the city attorney told you at a meeting two weeks ago that there is a law that allows you to do that. We don't need this emergency. We don't need to pretend that it exists and that you already have other options. And if at some point you feel there's an emergency coming back, you can bring that back. But at this point, please be honest. Thank you.
Just real quick, I just want to go back a couple years, well, three years, I guess. The state of emergency was enacted because supposedly we weren't able to meet the curve. That was kind of the guideline by the state. But in our area, we always were able to meet the curve. We never even came close to not meeting the curve. And the curve is, when you don't have the hospital beds to meet the demand of sick people, we did not come close to that. So now, and I just want to say, I love Zoom. I have no problem with you guys coming in on Zoom. I think that's fabulous. I think it's positive. I think it gives citizens an additional way to let their voices be heard and for us to be able to hear you guys. It's fabulous. But I worry that keeping this state of emergency is showing us that you guys want to be in control of us because it gives you some rights that you normally probably wouldn't have. And it's giving our governor some rights that, you know, he's able to enact laws without having the legislator vote on it. So I would just ask that you guys would let it go.
Anyone else for public comment on the consent agenda? AGP, do we have anyone in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue at this time.
Thank you. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anyone want to pull any items?
I'd like to, about to turn it on. I would like to hear briefly from our city attorney about A6.
A6, perfect. Mr. Newmeyer? A6, perfect. Mr. Meyer?
So Item A6 is proposing to the council, at the council's discretion, to pass what would be probably the last AB 361 resolution to provide for teleconferencing by all five council members. The ability to do that is authorized under Assembly Bill 361. One of the preconditions for using that ability for all five to teleconference is that the governor's declared a state of emergency for COVID. So the governor has stated that he probably will lift the state of emergency at the end of February. So if you do pass this resolution as of March 1st, it wouldn't be effective anyways. This AB 361 bill actually is applicable in the future. If there is another emergency that prevents all of you from meeting in person, then, and there's a state of emergency declared, like wildfires, et cetera, then you can also use 361 for that. As for the new laws, there's been reference made in public comment, and it's been in the staff report both today and recently. AB 2449 allows council members now to teleconference in for limited reasons. And so the important thing to remember is that you can't have a quorum teleconferencing in, so only two of you at the same meeting. And if you do that, you basically have to have either just cause, which is that you're sick, you have a medical illness, you're taking care of somebody close to you, you have a contagious illness, or you're traveling on official business for the city or the state. And you can do that twice a year, and that's it. Emergency circumstances basically are that you're providing, there's some medical emergency. And for that one, you can use it up to basically three months a year. For that one, you need the council to agree. For just cause, you can just use it twice a year. So clearly, Sacramento has made this somewhat confusing on what we can do at this point. But there is a limited ability now to teleconference in under AB 2449, and that's been effective since January 1st.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Does anyone want to pull anything?
Can I ask a question about that? Is there any way to, for the city to be out of the state of emergency but still be able to do the 361 remote meetings? Like, can we, is there like a hybrid thing that we could do?
So the state of emergency is a statewide declaration that the governor made. Tonight's resolution under A6 is not to declare that there's a state of emergency per se in the city. It's to basically affirm that state or local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing. And so the state of California continues to promote social distancing if somebody has COVID. So that's not really what's the resolution tonight. By the, by the actual black letter law of AB 361, the councils authorized to pass this resolution in its discretion with the findings that are in the resolution. And that would allow teleconferencing until probably the end of the month. I say probably because after the end of the month, the governor should be lifting the state of emergency, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Does anyone want to pull any items? Then I'm going to, I'm going to pull A6, and I'll ask for motion to approve A1 through A5.
I second that. You get it. Go ahead, make the motion. Then, help me out here. A1 through A5, I move that we approve those. And I'll second that.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. I'm going to pull A6. And as you know, I pulled it last month, too, because I just couldn't support us continuing with it as a state of emergency under those guidelines when we have the others in effect. And I know that it's a great tool to have, but if we're not in a state of emergency, as others have shared, I just can't support continuing it, even though it's potentially for two more weeks. So I will make a motion to deny A6, the resolution on A6, and I'll look for a second.
I second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
No.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wickson?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
No clapping. Thank you. Thank you. We will move on to our business items. Just hallow you know, public hearing items tonight. Thank you. C1, are we turning this over to Mr. Qualick or to you? Mr. Qualick, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Dana, I'll wait for the slides. Tonight, Public Works Department is bringing to the City Council a request to approve an award of contract for the Transit Hub Improvement Project. I'll go through a short presentation first and then restate the recommendation. Next slide, please. Brief project history, Transit Shelter was built in the early 80s. There's a picture of it there. In 2012, there was an art installation put in by the Morro Bay Public Art Foundation. In 2019, SlowCog offered the city a grant to study our transit hub and its deficiencies. And the study conducted, looked at conditions and improvements, excuse me, to the transit hub. Next slide. Then, in fiscal year 20, the study that was then complete was reviewed by the Public Works Advisory Board. That happened on August 21st, 2019. The study was then brought to the City Council on October 8th, 2019. The City Council at that meeting accepted the study and approved the site and project. And in that same fiscal year, the city was awarded a State of Good Repair Grant, which was, again, then authorized by City Council for this project. In fiscal year 21, the City Council adopted the fiscal, well, in fiscal year 20, the City Council adopted the fiscal year 21 capital budget that included this project and a description of it. And then, again, the city was awarded another State of Good Repair Grant and a Rural Transit Fund Grant. And those were both authorized by the City Council at City Council meetings. In fiscal year 22, there was a design consultant that solicited public input from members of the Public Works Advisory Board and the Rec and Parks Commission at our annual park tour, which is a joint meeting between those two, between the advisory board and that commission. And that was done on October 20th, 2021. And then, just this past August, a project status report was brought to the Public Works Advisory Board about this project. So that's the project history. I'd like to talk a bit about why we're doing this project. The major driver are, is to put this transit hub into compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. There are issues with, at the current transit hub location, there are issues with wheelchair loading and unloading. The sidewalks up and down Harbor are not in compliance with the ADA. The crosswalks are not in compliance, the sidewalk, too. The public restroom is not in compliance. So there are a lot of issues with ADA there. One of them happens to be that the wall that faces oncoming buses is a cinder block wall. And so if you're in a wheelchair and you want to be in the shelter because perhaps it's raining, you can't see whether a bus is coming. And if you're in a wheelchair, it may take you extra time to actually get from the shelter seating to the bus. So it's not really designed for folks with disabilities. Again, since it was designed in the 1980s, that wouldn't have been a thing then because the ADA was passed, I believe, in 1990 or 1991, which was after that shelter was designed. So again, we'd be improving visibility and lighting and increasing seating capacity. I've seen a rumor out there that we are increasing service. That's not true. The current seating capacity, it's, there's a concrete couch with three seats on it and not much room for someone with a wheelchair. And so this would, depending on whether or not there was an individual with a wheelchair in the two new shelters, would provide capacity for standing and seating combined somewhere between 14 and 20 individuals. There's also insufficient vehicle pull-in and pull-out space. So this project does look at removing one parking space to allow for additional space for buses, to fit more buses there, which can ease congestion there. Next slide, please. This is a site plan. I'm going to ask, if possible, Dana, for you to zoom in to the right side of it, to the bottom right. And we're going to go from right to left. Is there a way to go that way? Yep. Okay. So I want to talk about what the project actually does. So first of all, it creates a curb ramp at Piney Way and Harbor Street that is ADA compliant. The current ramp is not ADA compliant. Then it replaces all of the sidewalk all of the way to the park, as you can see in the diagram. And if you, then scroll left, please. It then pushes back because the sidewalk is widened, it has to push back some fencing. And so we're going to have a wider sidewalk, but then we have to install a new fence that is of a new material but is the same height as the existing fence. And it's only pushing it back two feet. Then we are going to make improvements in the walkway to the restroom, as you can see, kind of going through the middle of the screen. And that's all new sidewalk. That's ADA compliant. It's currently not ADA compliant. If you could zoom back in there. No worries. It's okay. I think it's slide six. You're welcome. Is it control scroll? Yeah, if it's not doable, that's fine. So you can still see that we'd be replacing the cinder block shelter with two new modern shelters that will have an art component with them. The sidewalk width near those shelters is 10 feet, which is in ADA compliance with the feds, but also meets a county standard that we'd be obligated to meet. And then that sidewalk replacement continues all the way around the bend to Morro Bay Boulevard, where, again, that sidewalk is all replaced because it is currently not ADA compliant for folks with disabilities. And then we install a new curb, I'm sorry, a new ramp there around the bend, and then do new striping on the crosswalk on Morro Bay Boulevard. Finally, the project would remove two trees that would be, that are in the project area, and four trees would replace those two trees that would be removed. Those four trees are in green, and the two red dots there are the trees that are being removed. You can go to the next slide. Information about our bid, we released a bid in December. It was out there almost a month. We opened bids on the 12th of January. We received five bids. The lowest bid was actually non-responsive. They did not include several documents that they're required to include as part of the bid. And so that bid was let go, as is in alignment with our policies. And we took the second lowest bid. That was found to be responsive. Just, I won't go through all of this, but the total expenditures is around $525,000. All of it is grant funded. There is no City General Fund going into this project. The city has three grants that will be utilized to pay for it. But here with the costs, one thing I want to emphasize, the shelter costs are $30,000. So the city ourselves purchased the shelters because we thought that that would be faster than having a contractor start. And with all the delays related to the pandemic and supply chain, we didn't want to wait. So we were proactive and we ordered the shelters first. The cost to install those shelters will be $8,000. So the shelters themselves have an approximate cost of $37,000. Almost all of the rest of the cost of construction is concrete work. And that is to make the street safe for folks with disabilities and for us to be in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. There is some other work there regarding trees and design work as well. But, so again, the total cost is around $525.00. You could go to the next slide. This details the funding. This is all in the staff report, by the way. Again, a key takeaway here is that no general fund is used for this project. And some of these grants are restricted in terms of how they are used. All of the grants that we applied for that are project-specific have to be used for either transit operations or transit capital projects. So this would be a transit capital project. Next slide, please. And I mentioned the public art component. This would be something done post-construction. We'd release a call for artists. There's a concept currently for a mural or a mosaic towards the bottom of the new shelter. And then the shelter, as one of the constituents mentioned, would be glass largely around. And we'd be looking for someone locally to etch that glass into a nice design. All of that would be vetted by the Public Works Advisory Board and then go to City Council for approval. Next slide. And again, the decision tonight for City Council is whether to award a contract to GSOSA Construction that was based on the invitation to bid that the city performed a couple of months ago. I know that the City Council has received a lot of questions about the site location and, you know, how this project was approved. That's why I included the history here. That is not on the agenda for tonight to decide that. That was decided by the City Council in 2019. But certainly, I'll be happy to take any questions on either the bid or the project or the project history.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick. Council questions?
Could you explain the reason for that location when you looked at the other three, I mean, the other two?
Councilmember Landrum, so that decision was before my time, but I can, I can do my best to explain it based on the reports that I've read. A study was done that analyzed three locations at City Park, one on the eastern side of Harbor Street, one at the current location, and then one across the park along Morro Bay Boulevard. There were some drawbacks to the other two locations. On the eastern side of the park, along Harbor Street, there was a, there was a visual impact. And on the Morro Bay Boulevard side, there are some safety concerns there, as well as traffic congestion concerns there. If the school district, for example, moved their busing to that location, every time that stop sign moved off of the bus, all traffic has to stop on Morro Bay Boulevard. That is an arterial road as opposed to Harbor Street, which is a collector street. Harbor Street does not see as much traffic, whereas Morro Bay Boulevard, if traffic were to stop, that, that could potentially back up quite far. Further, it is an arterial road, and as we know, people don't always follow rules. If someone comes off of a bus, they're oftentimes likely to just go ahead and cross the street and not walk to a crosswalk. There's a concern that public school children may use that opportunity to cross Morro Bay Boulevard, where cars are going much faster than on Harbor Street, as well as just riders on our transit systems. Finally, there's an issue with cost on the Morro Bay Boulevard location. And that's because it would require a cut-in into the park so that the buses can turn in, which would cut the footprint of the park quite a bit and create a lot of concrete work. There's also a utility pole at that location, which would be rather expensive to relocate. If anyone has worked with utility relocations in the public right-of-way, it is not as easy as it looks because we don't own that utility pole. And so the existing location sort of checked all the boxes. It's certainly not a perfect location either, but it had the least impact, and it was already the site of the bus stop. So there's the site of the bus stop, so there's really just no change in the location.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Burton?
No questions.
Councilmember.
Mr. Qualick, can I address Art in the Park, just very briefly? I know it, you know, our events, especially that one, which is, I think, three weekends out of the year. I'd just like to hear from you with regard to the construction, whether or not we can complete that by the time that Art in the Park starts in May. Is that a possibility, or, just want to hear a bit about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards. The short answer is yes. So based on the project schedule that we have, that wants the notice to proceed, excuse me, is given to the contract, they have to start work in 10 days, and they have 40 days, I'm sorry, 45 days to complete. Suppose that notice to proceed went out on March 1st, the project construction would be done in early May. And there's about a three- or four-week buffer between that and the first Art in the Park.
Thank you.
Any questions, Councilmember Ford?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have one remaining question, because the other two are already asked. Great job. Thank you, Mr. Qualick, for your work on this, and I want to say that when I first was appointed to be liaison for Public Works Advisory Board, yourself and Pamela Newman were leading the Public Works and the Wreck and Parks crew, the boards around, to look at the various parks and improvements and ideas, and it was great to hear all the ideas that came from individuals that volunteered to be on our advisory boards. And so they provided a lot of good input, and I think some of that was put into this. But I know you guys have put in a lot of work over the years, and there also has been some really great input from our public as well. I just want to acknowledge some of the really detailed emails that came forward. Whether or not they were doable, I just appreciate the time that was put into it, so I just want to say that. But I do have one remaining question, and it is, if it's in there, I apologize, but I didn't see if there is a separate cost for the art installation, or if that's included in the grant. Grants.
I'm going to say something and look to see if Janine is not overhead. But that would be an additional cost outside of what the City Council would be approving tonight, which is the award of contract, and I believe it is within the project budget. She nodded her head, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was my only question, thank you.
Your engineer's here, he's not answering. Thank you. I don't have any questions at this time, so with that, I will open public comment on item C1. I do have three speaker slips, so I'll start with those.
Mayor Wixom, an honorable City Council, my name is Steve Powers, and I'm director for Morro Bay Art in the Park, and have been since 2016. I live in Templeton. The bus stop improvement plans were approved by the City Council in October of 2019. Grant money was secured in late 2021 and 2022. Construction was scheduled to start in early 2022 and then finish before Art in the Park on Memorial Day weekend of 2022. Once again, there were delays, and the city decided to postpone construction until right after the end of Art in the Park last show in September in 2022. After the September show, I waited until October and sent another email to Pamela Newman and Public Works. I asked her if construction will be starting soon in October, and we received another email stating that there were more delays in the project, and it would be now scheduled from February 28th and ending on April 28th of 2023. A contractor has been selected, and they are G Sosa of Santa Maria, with a listed phone number that is disconnected and no functioning website. There is no way to contact them as a member of the general public. We do not know if there is a specific timeframes in the contract, if there are penalties for delays, and the contractor fully understands that the project must be completed no later than middle May of 2023. Construction of the new bus stop will require first the removal of two large 60-year-old eucalyptus trees that have very extensive root systems, and could result in underground damage to water lines, sewer lines, and electrical utilities. If construction is not delayed until after this year's season of 2023 Art in the Park, and the trees and the transit center are still standing on March 21st, there's no way that the construction will be completed before Art in the Park on Memorial Day weekend. I've built two homes, I can guarantee you, there's always delays. If the area is delayed, construction will result in an unsafe, unattractive, and underperforming Art in the Park for exhibitors at the upcoming 67th annual event. This project has been approved since 2019, there has been ample time to get this project done, so it would not interfere with Art in the Park. Proceeding with construction in early 2023 and facing potential delays is an accident waiting to happen. There is no way to foresee problems and slowdowns, and you don't want City Park under construction and then invite a large crowd on Memorial Day weekend. The Morro Bay Art Association and Steve Powers and Company are requesting that construction for the new Transit Center be delayed until after the 2023 Art in the Park season, which ends on September 4th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you. I am Kathleen Heil, I'm the president of Morro Bay Art Association, and I absolutely agree with what Steve said, that if, I've never seen a project that hasn't had delays, and if there is a delay, it will be a catastrophe for our Art in the Park with the public there, and I just request that you seriously consider delaying this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker slip is from Derek Dogren.
Hello, Mayor, Council. My name's Derek Dogren, and I live directly across from the transit hub. The proposed project doesn't address the ongoing safety or congestion challenges related to the existing location. We have been witness to many changes, events, and actions over the years. We've lived there, the house has been owned since 1977 by our family. Utilized the indicated report options would significantly impact on safety for riders, students, residents, and congestion. My safety observations have been in the morning, school buses seem to be organized chaos as parents drop off students, the morning meetings at the lodge, sometimes transit buses are on-site at the same time as the school buses. Transit riders, over the years, I have seen almost hit by crossing the street with traffic. My grandnephew was hit by a car while playing basketball at the basketball court, while playing with some friends next door. Some of the migrating population of the unhoused and the dysregulated have a tendency to utilize the hub throughout the day and evening as a shelter because of the overutilization of the congested area next to the children's playground, bathroom, and basketball court. My observed congestion, increased parking requirements for the meetings at the IOOF Lodge throughout the day. There have been many permanent learned shifts and traffic patterns going to the Albertson's Shopping Center. Also, guess what? At the corner is the fire department. Also, Harbor Street is just plain narrow. The proposed open space across from the park has the highest visibility, raising public awareness to the transit hub and services. This also increases the ability of the police and the public to monitor the site. It is also increases the public awareness to any public art. I have provided information for your views since the time allocation doesn't allow me to touch on everything. Working in the industrial sector for many years, with my primary focus on safety over the aspect of the project schedule, budget, and scope, makes sure everyone goes home to their families and are healthy. I don't feel comfortable that the overall safety aspect of this project has been fully addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dogren. Public comment is open.
Do you have my speaker slip? I turned in the speaker slip.
You turned one in earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
For public comment.
I didn't want to waste paper and produce three of them, I wrote all of the items. My name's Terry Simons, I'm here to speak on this item, and fascinatingly enough, I came to speak on it because I was excited that the Public Works Department had actually reviewed the bidders and had disqualified the lowest bidder, which is something we talked about a while back. Now I find out in public testimony, if it's correct, that perhaps the second lowest bidder may not be responsive if his phone number doesn't work, but I don't know if that's on the list of responsive tests or not. But that's why I was here. Now, I'm getting a lot of information from the public that probably you hadn't had either, and I'm questioning what the status of the project is. We're here to award a contract, but it would appear that the public in general is not particularly satisfied with the design and the location of this project. And this speaks to what I'm going to speak to later, and that's the ability of transparency of public processes to allow public input earlier in the process. And I would question whether this project gave out any kind of notices to the neighbors or other members of the community to give the kind of input two years ago, three years ago, that they're now choosing to give now. So I guess I'm just speaking to the general issues of process, and I hope that the lessons that we're learning that I'm going to speak to later will take us more in the direction of finding ways to get the public involved earlier in the process before we spend inordinate amounts of staff time, consultant times, and other things, and then come to projects that when they're all ready for approval, we find ourselves being bombarded by public input.
Hello, thank you. Judy Setting. Am I the only one with sticker shock? So within the last two years, we built a home, a 2,600-square-foot home, and the construction fees came to $560. I'm trying to calculate in my head where these costs are coming from. Taking out a couple trees, okay, $12,000 maybe. We know about this because we have lots of trees on our golf course. My husband has built multimillion-dollar project hospitals, and when I saw this a few months ago in the paper, I think there was a $485,000 cost on it or something. I don't quote me on that, but anyway, I read about it, and I mentioned it to Rocky, and I said, "Now, what do you think that would cost?" Oh, gosh, 40, I didn't say what was listed, I just described it, and he said, "Oh, does it have concrete work?" And I said, "I believe so," for ADA, $48,000? So now, my husband isn't really even retired, he should be, but he's up to date on costs. And I'm really curious about this. And then as far as taking out trees, did somebody already say you could make the walkway across Morro Bay Boulevard by Foster Freese, and maybe come down that way so that you wouldn't have to take out trees? Are you taking out the trees because of going across Morro Bay Boulevard, going that way? I'm not, I wasn't clear about that, but anyway, when you're spending even grant money, I don't know if somebody donated this money, or did it come from taxpayers, but every time you spend even a dollar, please try to remember the taxpayer who is supporting a family with maybe four kids, and he's paying his taxes, he's working a couple jobs, and going out to dinner is McDonald's, going to Disneyland is a 10-year savings. So this is, I cannot even believe that the costs are legit.
Betty Winholz. I think the request by Art in the Park would work nicely with denying or rejecting all the bids this evening. Give us a chance to look at the actual project, not the concept, which is the only thing we've ever seen, because it was not reviewed by P-Web once they gave their input, it never came to the Planning Commission at all, and what council approved was not the project, what they approved was the study, the site, and to go get grants. And the project description did not give us a concrete final product. And so that disturbs me that there has not been public input, and this delay would certainly help with that if the bids were rejected. I'm still going to stand by my comment that I think the seating is increased too much, that we don't know all the items that are included. We've been given a list, but we haven't been given location and materials and all that kind of stuff. I'm concerned about the fencing and what that's going to look like. I have extreme concern about the sidewalks, I think this goes back to the cost that was just mentioned. If it's 10 feet by the buses, is it 10 feet all the way around east, around to the corner of Morro Bay Boulevard, when ADA only requires four feet, unless it's by the buses, which is eight feet? So why are we going to eight, nine feet, and 10 feet? That's not necessary for ADA. Was there a circulation study done? And the kids, because I'm a tutor and I pick up kids sometimes, I don't see them going across the corner of Harbor up to, over to Morro Bay Boulevard, they go down to Foster Freese, and they go across at Piney Way. So that would be the greater concern, and I think that's already ADA accessible. So, and then the basketball court, you know, if you're expanding the sidewalk 10 feet by the place where you're going to put the seating, what does that do to our basketball court, which is very popular and usually used a lot? And in terms of not using city money, I agree that there's no general fund money, but aren't we using money out of the transit fund? And I would just like that acknowledged one way or the other, I could be wrong, but I think we are taking money out of our transit fund for that. So money's a concern, timing is concerned, certainly I agree with Art in the Park, the width of the sidewalks, and again, the trees, the concrete, if you've walked there, there's nothing wrong with those sidewalks. The only two places where there's bumps is where those two trees are, and I don't think that means you need to replace all of the concrete, which goes back to Ms. Setting's
Good evening again. I just have a few little comments. I spoke about this in a public forum a few weeks ago, I guess. I happened to find this, the plans, because I was looking at the Atlanta Street Slope project. So the sidewalk, it's been said and apparently shown on one of these maps that it's only being widened from Harbor to the bathrooms. Is that what I'm hearing? So it doesn't go all the way, it's not widened all the way to Morro Bay Boulevard? Is that, anyway, question for staff. Trees. You know that we have a tree ordinance, and it's a two-to-one replacement. I was so saddened because a few weeks ago, I drove by to take pictures of the park because of the ADA-compliant answer that I got when I asked why the plans weren't included, and why this was going to be going on, and they said that was ADA. So I took pictures of the corners, and I took pictures of the trees and the hub, and then I went by another time, and I was just devastated because it already topped the trees. The two, I guess they're 60 years old, I hadn't heard that. I hadn't heard that. Two-to-one. I don't even know if the plans mention replacing those trees, and if so, where? That would be putting in four trees somewhere. That park is in dire need of shade because those are the only two trees that do shade. The contract documents, plans, and specifications are also being withheld from the staff report, much like was done with the Atlanta Street project. Yet you are being expected to approve this contract without, without them to the tune of a little over $400,000, maybe more, by the time this thing's finished, the way the city goes on things. Art in the Park, it ends, they said, in late September. You know, if you'd have considered the time about this, because Cal Poly and Queens students are out of school during the summer. And lastly, who did the estimate since the plans were done by Cannon and the specifications were prepared by who? I don't know. City engineer? I'm just curious. But I really think that the city council needs to have, in your packet, the plans and specifications. Because when I read them before, it said the sidewalks were going to be five feet. Somewhere, I heard somebody say six. Now I'm hearing eight. What are they? Where does it say that? Not in the little map that you have in your packet now. The little map doesn't tell you what the actual plans are. There are 16 pages of plans, but you have to dig and click and click and click to get to ASAP to find them. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on item C1? AGP, do we have anyone in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council for staff questions. Mr. Qualick, ready? Ready, set, go?
Yes.
Can we talk a little bit on, and I'll repeat if you ask, do the grants expire, the cost, the contact info, the ADA sidewalk size, distance? And I'll stop there for right now.
Mayor Wixom, as to the question of whether the grants expire, depends which grants we're talking about. We have three in question, and then to answer a question that one of the constituents raised, that yes, we are using our transit fund for that additional, I believe it was $80,000 or so. And I'm looking back at Janine, our management analyst, who's put a lot of work into this project. Those grants do expire, or does it depend? Okay, Janine's coming up.
Thank you, Ms. Berning.
Thank you, and good evening. The two different grants, the Rural Transit Fund grant and the State of Good Repair grant, they do have a timeframe in which those grants need to be spent. I think with the State of Good Repair, we have two different grants that we received, one in 1920 and one in 20, or 2021 and 2122, and then the Rural Transit Fund grant in that second year. And so if they were to, if we were to look to delay, have to redo the bids, we'd have to go back to the Council of Governments, talk with them, and let them know that we may have an issue with one of the grants that might expire, and see if we had someone under contract, whether we, and we were delaying the project, whether we could extend that time period. With the local transportation funds that we, about the $82,000 that was mentioned that we're using of our local monies for transit, those do not have an expiration date. We get those as an allocation every year. These were surplus funds that had not been allocated either to operations or an existing capital project that we are now allocating to this capital project. So they don't have a time period in which they need to be spent.
Thank you, Janine. So mixed, depending on the grant. There was a question also about grant monies and how we spend them, and I would just say that, you know, some of this money is from the slow cog. If we don't spend these funds, another jurisdiction in the county will spend these funds for a similar project. And so we fight very hard to bring funding here to keep our infrastructure modern and in good shape. The contact info, I'd like to call up our city engineer, Eric Rideo, who reviewed the bids and can answer that question. I don't have detail on that.
Good evening. As far as the contact info, I'm not sure where that was pulled from, but I have the updated contact information for the contractor. Not all construction companies and other companies have our modern and have websites and, but G-SOSA is a very reputable company in the, on the Central Coast and has done many successful projects for many agencies throughout the Central Coast. So their reputation is very, they're highly regarded in this area for doing this type of work. So I would be happy to provide contact info for those who would like to, and my email is, is on our city website, so I can be contacted.
Thank you for that, Eric. And then there was another question about the width of sidewalks. So there's three widths in question. There's a six-foot width, an eight-foot width, and a 10-foot width. This is complicated because it involves three different governmental powers standards. So the city standard is for ADA sidewalks to be six foot of width. Then in areas where there is pickup and drop-off of passengers from a bus, the federal standard for ADA is eight feet. And then the county, where there is a shelter, adds two feet on top of the eight feet, which makes 10 feet. So we are not necessarily doing one width the entire way. The city has no interest in adding additional sidewalk where it's not needed, except by, except to be in compliance with law or any local standards.
Thank you. The distance on the sidewalks, does it end before it finishes at the end of the street?
Or? Yeah, so I won't pull up the map unless, unless it's requested, but it's essentially going from the curb ramp at the corner of Piney and Harbor Street, goes east all the way to where Harbor Street merges with Morro Bay Boulevard, and goes around that, that angle of that intersection to the crosswalk on Morro Bay Boulevard. All-new sidewalk. And then we are also adding a pathway, concrete, I'm sorry, not adding, but replacing a concrete pathway that goes from between the current transit hub shelter and the playground all the way to the restrooms. I know there was a comment made that, you know, the sidewalk looks okay. You know, it's not in compliance with ADA. And beyond making these improvements for folks with disabilities to have access to our facilities, there is a legal question and a liability question, that if the city chooses not to implement its Americans with Disabilities Act plan, which we're required to show progress on, the city is exposing itself potentially to some liabilities from claims and other things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick. I know on our map that we're looking at, there is, for the comment about the tree replacement, it does show on here the two trees that come down on the four replace in the city park. So my, my last two questions, and then I'll turn it over to the other councilwoman, is about the basketball courts and the fencing.
Thank you, Mayor Wixom. The sidewalk near the basketball court is only being, there's only two feet being added to that existing sidewalk, so there's no impact to the basketball court whatsoever. In terms of the fencing, because we're moving back in general, the sidewalk's two feet. That means that those fences have to go back two feet, and so we're going to be replacing those fences, but we'll do so at the same exact height that they are now.
Thank you for the information. And I will move to the rest of the council, looking to my right.
We had some comments about the, the date of the Art in the Park and whether or not this project could meet the dates. How does that look from your perspective?
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. I'd like to say, before I answer that, that the city has been in communication with Art in the Park throughout the project. It's true that there have been delays at various points in the project, but we are fully aware of what the dates are for Art in the Park. It's at the front of our minds. That's why we're bringing this project to the city council today, because we believe the project will be done before Art in the Park starts towards the end of May. Again, and I can call up the city engineer if I'm saying anything that's incorrect, but after the notice to proceed is issued by the city, the contractor will have 10 days to start. And so, for example, if the notice to proceed is issued on March 1st, the contractor would be required to start work on March 10th. After that, the contractor would have 45 days to complete the work. And if you, you know, have a calendar handy in front of you, that puts you, I believe, at the first weekend in May, which is approximately three weekends or three weeks before Art in the Park starts. So it does even give us a buffer, and potentially, the city could issue the notice to proceed earlier than March 1st. So we believe we have enough buffer should any unforeseen issues arise, where, you know, we still have enough time to complete the project before the event.
Thank you.
Councilmember Landrum.
Can I ask just what were the delays caused by?
Thank you, Councilmember Landrum. A few, a few things. Number one is we have competing high priorities for projects in this city. We have many projects that we're working on. Some of them have timelines that are required to be met. We have emergency projects that have to be implemented as soon as possible. We have projects that are already in progress that wouldn't make sense for us to stop to start another project. So we are constantly juggling those projects and trying to move them forward as quickly as possible to make sure that we meet deadlines. So that, I would say, is the main reason. Another reason is that we've had some turnover in the Public Works Department with the Public Works Director and the City Engineer, and those sorts of things create some minor delays, not major delays, but minor delays.
Okay. And then with the contract, are there penalties in the contract that, you know, if for some reason it's not done by the time of the, if it goes ahead and there's, it's not finished by the time of Art in the Park, are there penalties for the contractor?
That's a good question. I will kick it to our city engineer, Eric Rideo.
Yeah, there are liquid data damages of $500 a day for not completing the project on time. Now, as far as, the contractor has already made aware that there are some items that have long lead times and related to electrical, but those type of components would not impact the Art in the Park activities. So there might be some lighting components that would be, the contract would be delayed until those items are received. But the concrete work, the pavement restoration, the transit or shelter erection, and all the fencing work would be completed before Art in the Park season.
Thank you, Eric. I'll also add that the city already has the shelters. They're sitting in the corporation yard.
And, and were the neighbors noticed that this was going to be done?
So typically, notification comes from the contractor, once we have a contractor on board that construction is coming. I'm not sure, it's some history I'd have to dig into as to whether or not the neighbors specifically were invited in any public discussions about this project. But again, this project was authorized and approved in, I believe, 2019. And if I could just add something, it's, it's true that the city council directed the Public Works Department to continue with the project and to pursue funding, but also another mechanism that the city council has to approve and authorize projects is through the annual budget. And so in the fiscal year 2021 budget, the Public Works Department states that we will be doing a project to conduct an RFP for City Park Transit Hub Improvements Project to develop construction plans and bid specifications, initiate planning permit application, process this for City Park Transit Hub Improvement Project, and conduct construction bid for City Park Transit Hub Improvement Project. And so we've done all that work now, up to today, per the adopted budget for fiscal year 2021.
One last question. With the trees, do you know what the height will be of the new trees?
We don't have that information yet because we haven't purchased the trees, but we-
No, I mean, like the, the, they're, you know, their adult, their, their top height that they'll get to.
Yeah. That is a level of specificity that the-
They're, they're not going to be like a shrub. They're going to be like equal to what was there.
Well, the, the trees will be from our adopted city tree list, so the, the actual variety of the tree hasn't been selected at this time.
And the trees, of course, will not be the size, the current size of the existing trees, because the current trees are mature, old trees.
That was the word I was looking for, mature. Yeah, that's what I, I just wanted to make sure that they were going to be, when they were mature, they would be equal to what is being removed.
That's certainly good input for us.
Councilmember Edwards, any questions?
I think this might be for Mr. Riden. I was just wondering if there, if there was a delay, what is the kind of ramifications we would face on cost? Is there any way of looking at that if we were to delay this?
Councilmember Edwards, just to clarify, do you mean if we could delay the entire project, or do you mean if during construction there was a delay?
The entire project. If we were to delay this again, I'm assuming there would be increased cost.
Councilmember Edwards, I think that assumption is fair based on the way construction cost escalation has been going over the past few years. I would also say there might be other impacts if we choose to delay the project. You know, we, the city did go out to bid for this. Contractors took time and resources to, to prepare those bids. And, you know, one consequence potentially is that contractors may think twice about preparing bids for the city because of the unpredictability of, of the project. So that's, that's my own personal opinion and comment. I don't know if Eric has anything additional to add to that? No. Yes, we believe there would be cost escalation. I don't have an estimate on what that would be.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I have one question about the school bus drop-off. So from what I'm hearing from the individual that spoke about the issue with the bus drop-off versus the public transit drop-off, if that is a school drop-off, so if that could be clarified, if it is, and then if, with that being said, what happens during construction for, because if it's still during the school year, and then so, do we have a plan for that, for an alternative drop-off pickup area? And then also, with this new plan, does it actually make it safer for all the different various buses that are dropping off children? So I guess, so the first question would lead to the other two if it's true, so.
Yeah, I'll actually answer your, your second question first.
Okay.
This project is putting in a new shelter where the current shelter sits and making ADA improvements to sidewalks. The project does not contemplate circulation or other kinds of safety issues that are going in the road. However, we can, we can surmise, based on the evaluation and based on our own personal experience, that if there are safety issues on Harbor Street due to the shelter, those safety issues would be increased on a busier road. And so that's, that's my comment there. I'm not sure if I'm answering your second question, but as to the first question, again, that's a level of specificity that our program manager for this project would, would know, maybe the city engineer knows.
our program manager for this project would, would know, maybe the city engineer knows.
This, the question related to during construction, that would be something to work with the contractor on as far as an alternative drop off point and pickup point and the transit providers. There'd be some coordination on that. There might be staging of construction activities being at one end of the park and then transitioning to the other and, you know, shifting the drop off pickup location during construction, but that, that's something to work out with the contractor.
Okay, so wait, just really quick before you walk away. So you were saying that it's the contractor's job to work with the school? Did I get that correct, the school district, or is that our?
The contractor and the city will work.
Okay, okay. So together, working together. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
That would be with all transit coming in and out of there, not just the school district, correct, Mr. Ridden?
All transit providers that use that.
Work that out, thank you. Okay, I think we got most of our questions answered, hopefully. So.
Mayor Wixson, may I speak for?
No, no, sir, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. If I open it up, I have to open it up to everyone, and we're getting, getting late. So comments, or motion, or both, moving down to my right.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 923 for award of the bid for this project.
Do you have a second?
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any further comments? Not? I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
No.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixson?
Yes.
Motion carries for one.
Thank you. And we're going to move on to C2. And I believe that is going to be, if I get to it. Well, let me just use my computer here. Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Councilmember Wixson. And before you, C2 is consideration of the formation of a downtown design district. This item comes from your future, your list of future agenda items. It stems from council action on the city's updated zoning code. So goes back to October 25th of 2022, when the council reviewed ordinance 654, which was the adopting ordinance for the zoning code update. As part of that meeting, the planning, the City Council directed staff to make a change to the zoning code standards related to height in the downtown, taking it from 30 feet to 37 feet. That policy was originally in the draft zoning code and had been in there for many years while we were going through the zoning code update process, but was removed when the Planning Commission made their final recommendation to City Council. They removed that 37-foot height item in September of 2022 and forwarded that recommendation on to City Council. So with the council direction to incorporate it back in, we did that. And we brought the ordinance back for final reading on November 22nd with the 37-foot height limit increase in the downtown. So that's running down Morro Bay Boulevard and then turning north on Main Street and going to Beach. And it's all the lots that front on Morro Bay Boulevard for that, for that stretch, and then the front on Main Street. At the end of that meeting, a majority of council directed that this item, this before you this evening, be added as a future agenda item, so we could discuss the formation of a design district committee. The concept of the design district committee first came out of the Planning Commission when they made the recommendation to remove the 37-foot height from the draft zoning code. The Planning Commission, when they were, you know, weighing in on this, had the preference to form a subcommittee of the Planning Commission to, one, do some additional engagement of the community, engage stakeholders, folks that would be interested in the height increase in the downtown, to better define where it might be appropriate to put the height limitation, to look at mechanisms to do that, to increase the height to the 37 feet through potentially form-based codes and things like that. So we would have a real good idea about where we would be going to 37 feet, how much of a block might look, might go to 37 feet, what it might look like, including step backs and things like that. That was all of the interest of your Planning Commission when they made the request as part of their recommendation to City Council on the draft zoning ordinance to form a subcommittee to look at this. And then the last item, they were also interested in potentially looking at ways where we might include like incentives in there for housing or affordable housing that might go along with that increase to 37 feet. There's some alternatives that you can look at. The city has formed ad hoc committees in the past. We have one right now that's, that's functioning, and we, and the city manager formed that to look at opportunities to increase housing in the area around the Casa de Flores/Bayside Care Facility. That's ad hoc committee, includes two members of the City Council, two members of the Planning Commission, a couple of members of the Chamber, and city staff. We also did an ad hoc committee back when we drafted the short-term rental ordinance. That was made up of stakeholders that were in the hotel business, vacation rental, property management companies, citizens, with two City Council members that were sort of leading the committee, staffed by city manager, myself sometimes, city attorney's office was also pivotal in the creation of that ordinance. So there's the ability to form other types of committees. Doesn't necessarily have to be the housing one the city manager already has operational, but that one does seem to function well. Council could come up with some other direction about the, the formation of the, or the composition of the ad hoc committee. And maybe it includes some other business owners in the downtown, Morro Bay citizens, what have you. It's kind of up to the, the council to provide that direction this evening. I think the last sort of option that would be before you would be for the council to choose to direct staff to bring back the height increase that was incorporated into the zoning code update, which is now sitting in front of the Coastal Commission for certification. That would probably be my least favorite option, just because it probably relate to delays in certification of the city's zoning code by the Coastal Commission. But certainly on the table for the, for the council to discuss. So with that, staff is seeking council direction on what type of committee you might want to form as it relates to the design district, what that might be compromised of. Would it be, you know, Planning Commission? Would it be the current ad hoc housing committee that we have that's formed? Any of those types of things. And if there is a direction that comes out of a majority of council on this item this evening, I would simply request that it be incorporated into our goals process, because it is, would end up being part of the work program for the Community Development Department, and I would want that reflected as such in the goal-setting process. With that, I would be happy to answer. Any questions?
That was good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Graham. With that, I'll bring it to council for questions. Councilmember Barton, any questions? Not yet. Councilmember Landrum?
I don't have any questions right now.
Councilmember Edwards?
So do we have, or did we have an ad hoc committee formed for this specifically? I know we had one for Casa de Flores, but-
Yeah, we didn't for this one. What we were offering up is that we could use that same ad hoc committee that we looked at for housing on the properties surrounding Casa de Flores. It was a good group, folks that seemed to get along well, a lot of smart people in the group. So that is one option, certainly not the only option, but that is one that's a standing group that we have now. It was formed by your city manager, and I think could do the job well. So, but certainly open to other thoughts, so.
Do we know who these people are, just out of curiosity? I just want to know who they covered, and what areas, resident, stakeholder, or what they're a combination of right now? Is there anybody missing, I guess, a resident?
There are some folks, right? So we had, on the Planning Commission side of things, it was Bill Roche, who was the then vice chair, now chair, Planning Commission, Susan Stewart, who's no longer on there, so we would have to appoint another Planning Commissioner to it. City Council, we had the then mayor heading, so potentially would be Mayor Wixson, and, and yes, and, and Councilmember Ford. So we do have those still in place. And the folks from the Chamber was Stephen Pack, Jeff Echols, both still on the Chamber. And then, from a staff standpoint, it's myself, city manager, and Chamber CEO, Eric Crawford.
And your question, if there's people missing, yeah, you could add to that group or create a whole new committee or use the Planning Commission Subcommittee. But certainly, thoughts, you know, come to mind, downtown business owners, or just, you know, resident, regular residents who frequent the downtown area. Optimally, you have a membership of 10 to 12 individuals to have a functional team. You can certainly work to do outreach with that group to get more people and get the input. But my experience, especially with the vacation rental ordinance, that did take a bit of time because COVID got in the way of it, but I think it was, it was about 12 individuals that had a good balance of perspectives, and that's what you'd want for a design committee, from my, my perspective.
Yeah, and we could certainly, you know, if we wanted to start with like the housing ad hoc committee to identify others out in the community, we could bring that back to council if you'd like something along those lines. Happy to do that as well. If you don't, if you're not sure, you know, about who you might want on it specifically this evening, we could bring that back and run it through that committee, maybe. I was, I've been thinking about that while I was sitting here, so I thought I'd offer that up.
Councilmember Ford, questions?
Yeah, can I get some more clarification on what you were just talking about, Mr. Graham? So since we do have individuals who are no longer on council or on Planning Commission, do we need to vote on, well, first of all, I know we would have, if we decide to move forward with this direction, that we would have to vote on who makes up this group. And, but if we went ahead and went with the same group, let's just say, hypothetically, we did that, would we need to read, decide who goes on to that committee, that ad hoc committee, the original one, since it's changed and it's a new year and a new council? Like, do we revisit that anyway?
I think, I mean, as far as the Planning Commission goes, you know, unless you have specific folks on there, I think we would just go back to the Planning Commission. We still have Bill Roche on the Planning Commission, and we would just need to choose another member of the Planning Commission to be on it. We could simply do that at your direction, unless there's somebody specific that you want. From a council standpoint, you know, we still have you. And it would make sense, unless the mayor wants to have somebody else do it, that she would be on it, too. So I think we kind of fill those pieces. And, and I, you know, we would need to reach out to the Chamber folks and make sure they're still, you know, in, in play. And, and the idea that I was coming up was with really that that group could sit down and say, oh, who are these other business owners? Who are the other Morro Bay citizens that we might want to include in the group? What's the right mix? And then we could come back and make that recommendation to City Council to like, yeah, this is great, please continue, or maybe that's not so great. I don't know.
Okay, so you're saying if we went in the direction of having the same group do this as well, first of all, we'd have to add the new council member or council members if we want to change that. And then we would, then, and then the group would decide who else is missing at the table, come back to council with the recommendation, then council would decide yes or no, let's add them to the group?
It was just an option for you to consider.
No, no, I'm just, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the process.
And it was kind of in line with what City Manager Collins was saying, is that, you know, when we did the short-term rental, there was a larger group, you know, that was, had a broader reach, right, than just, you know, folks from Planning Commission, City Council, and the Chamber. Maybe that's something you would want to consider for this, for this effort as well. So I don't know.
So could we skip that step and just say we want to add?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure. We didn't have to go that direction. We could actually just, okay, got it. Okay.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Councilmember Ford. It would, I think, to add to the group, maybe we don't, I think when I looked, it was like three chamber members or something. Maybe we only need two, one or two. I'd rather see that shift a little to include some of the anchor merchants that have been there for several years with a little diversity on the Boulevard that, and Main Street even. There could be a couple of those members that have a vested interest, too, in that. I think that would be a good idea. I'm going to open public comment for item C2. And Mr. Simons, I found your paper that you included everything on. Thank you so much.
I'm a strong believer in the Reduction of Paperwork Act. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I recently attended a Planning Commission meeting on February 7th and followed the Planning Commission deliberations regarding the appeal of Laurel Street residents. In the two and a half hours of testimony and discussion by the Planning Commission, it became apparent that the Planning Commission was taking on the role of a design review commission, that they were not prepared for and staff assistance was needed and provided. Fortunately, the issue seems to be resolved without pending further appeals. It was clear from the discussion that it would be a positive thing for public participation if the city had a design review commission or an architectural review commission. I addressed the commission on this issue as I have significant experience as a former member of the City of San Luis Obispo Architectural Review Commission. The PC also had extended, extended discussions on their ongoing desire to initiate a historical preservation commission for the city. Now, this would be a permanent body, very much like the Planning Commission, but on a subordinate level. I also spoke to this issue and recommended that the city form a design review commission with the additional authority to act as a historical review commission. Since most issues of building preservation are prompted by proposals for redevelopment of sites containing possible historic issues, it seemed logical to have the review of historic issues done in the context of a design review by an appropriate design review commission made up of local citizens with staff support provided by community development. This system is already in place in many communities, and hopefully, a DRC would provide early input by citizens that will reduce the desire by neighbors to appeal projects late in the process. Our community is changing. It's gentrifying. There are people coming into this community that haven't lived here for long periods of time, and they're coming from communities where they have substantial experience with public transparency through things like architectural review and other public review bodies. And they're beginning to think that this city should provide those kinds of public transparency vehicles here. You heard a lot of it tonight on a plethora of issues. I think that it's important that the community at large be able to look at its community and projects coming through the planning process as early as possible, so that they can give public input before both applicants and staff spend significant amount of resources. On the Laurel Street, the applicant asserted that he'd spent $70,000 on plans and engineering, and now, when he's ready to get a building permit, he's finding himself with a whole bunch of public outcry. I think we heard this on this little city project. And I'm sorry, I did provide other input, and I'll be speaking further in the future on this.
Thank you, Mr. Simons.
Joan Graffia, Morro Bay resident and member of the Planning Commission. And I decided to make what for me is a relatively rare appearance before the City Council to underscore my support for this design district concept, and to urge the council to not go back to a notion of a sort of a more blunt, one-size-fits-all notion of simply selecting 125 lots and raising the maximum height to 37 feet, largely because that sort of one-size-fits-all notion would, I think, incentivize the demolition of one-story buildings that we would otherwise want to preserve. I think also, it would incentivize developers acquiring not one, but two or three adjacent lots, and ultimately proposing construction that had a much, much larger horizontal facade to the commercial streets, which is not in keeping with what Morro Bay has now and would probably want for the future. And, and what, again, what one of those blunt, one-size-fits-all approach would be that it would not incentivize what we really want to incentivize, which is market-based affordable housing and/or workforce housing. In addition, the approach of this design district would allow us to develop some design principles, which would also- principles which would also incorporate the appropriate additional community benefits that might be part of granting this sort of a height extension. And then last of all, again, that sort of one size fits all approach ignores, you know, an essential concept, which is that there are always unanticipated negative consequences to every good idea. And that's why we need a more nuanced approach. And I, and I think my opinion is, is pretty much espoused by a majority of the planning commission. And I compliment Scott on an accurate description of what the majority opinion was for the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for this item?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council staff. My name is Glenn Silaway, I'm resident of More Bay. I, I'm here to urge you to take the staff's recommendation on this and form an ad hoc committee. You're talking about that now. I'm not going to try to get into composition of committee tonight, it's a little premature, but I think what we would get from this, through this, I hope, is a more comprehensive and transparent discussion of what we want to see our downtown and commercial areas to look like. When, we in the Historical Society used to do walking tours downtown and many of the buildings that we pointed people to and had histories for are the little ones, the one-story, unique, charming buildings. I hope that nothing comes out of this process that would enable us to get rid of those because that's part of the character of the city that we want to keep. At the same time, as Scott Graham and as Joe just mentioned, we need more housing. I think we have a, an ethical obligation to prevent, provide more workforce housing for people in this city and people who want to live here. I want to see a city where somebody who is a first time police officer can afford to live here. And if we can use this process to figure out a way to do that, we're all going to benefit. Let me say that at some point, that might mean we have to go up in some places in order to get the kind of improved housing and density that will help the downtown in terms of commercial and also provide places for people to live. So I, I urge you to pass that tonight and let's get started on it. It's an exciting project. Thank you.
Betty Winholz, I don't think you can do what the previous speakers have said without bringing back from the coastal commission, the height limit section that was passed to the coastal commission and has not been approved by them yet. It's not on the agenda for this month, I don't know if it's going to be on for next month. But you can't, you can't evaluate design when you've already predicted 37 feet because, and that's just the minimum, because with density bonuses and other kinds of things, you could be talking four stories. So unless you evaluate that, and not saying not to do it, but unless you balance that with the design district, you don't know what you're going to get. And so you've already committed us to one thing without evaluating it. So I think you have to bring back that piece from the zoning ordinance in order to look at the design district. And certainly looking at the composition of the committee, why are you putting more work on yourselves when this is really a planning issue? So it should be at the planning commission level and you definitely should have people who have storefronts on Main Street and, and the More Bay Boulevard. They're the ones that are being affected. They're the ones that rent their buildings and if they're sold, they get kicked out, as has already happened, on two different corners on More Bay Boulevard. So you've already done some damage. So to limit that damage, bring back the zoning ordinance and get going with the design district, but make sure you're including people that live and work in that area and us residents.
I hadn't really intended to speak on this tonight, but since it's here and I'm So this is the project, I believe, that was before the planning commission and I watched that meeting. And they were going to come back with this and review this, a design committee. And I believe that Mr. Graham stole it right out from under them and brought it to the city council, where they had the city council vote on it, rather than let it be in the planning commission and have them decide, which is where I believe this should be. So, and I remember you swearing in night, Mrs. Landrum, when you actually mentioned this and you had a standing ovation. People were clapping. So the people aren't here tonight, but there are many in this town that do not agree with 37 foot height limit downtown. And the minute that the city council approved this, the properties were, were bought right at the corner of More Bay Boulevard and, I don't know, Napa, whatever that, no, Chasta maybe, Threads and Castaways. Wasn't even up for sale, but I bet you they got an offer they couldn't refuse, so they sold. Why did they sell? The person who actually bought it owns the other corner on the same side of the street where Gilligan's or a sandwich shop. And they own, they bought the title company and they plan on putting a boutique hotel there. Are we already changing the look of our downtown? This is More Bay. I've been here, I don't even know how long, 50 years, maybe, a couple less. This used to be a fishing village. It has a character that the people of More Bay want to keep. And I would hope that you would see that. I would hope that the people that you put on whatever design committee you create are also not, I liked your suggestion, Mayor, of some of the businesses, because the same person that bought the two businesses that weren't even for sale has been going up and down the street, talking to those businesses to see if they want to sell. What's that man gotten? What's he thinking about our downtown? What he wants to do to it? So also what about, you know, maybe just residents? I didn't know there was a, a subcommittee on the housing over Bacasa, those 10 lots that, anyway, thank you very much.
Any other public comment on this item?
Natalia Merzouin, I just wish you would consider backing off this drastic move towards heights and density and all that. People talk about it as if it's going to be something that will make housing affordable, but I have yet to find a single community where they've taken that approach and things have gotten cheaper. And, you know, it just, it tends to make squalid living for the future occur because everybody's shoved together more, not to mention living in California. High density is, is a risk for catastrophic earthquakes, which could occur, you know. But in a community like ours where we rely on tourism and people came here for the beauty and, you know, it's kind of an art fishing community, tourism, and I, I don't think it's the way to go. I think our view shed is very important, which is always disturbed by closer density and higher buildings and it's a bad idea in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, do we have anyone in the queue?
There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. We'll start with council questions. I'm going to ask one real quick question. Mr. Graham, do we have to bring it back, the part of the changes that went up to coastal commission for the height to address this in the design district? Can it still be addressed this way or do we need to bring it back to do that?
It can, I think it doesn't, it's not necessary to bring it back. I, I want to step back here for a second. We have a lot of design policies in place now. You have a downtown in waterfront strategic plan that has design guidelines in it, you have a design element to your recently adopted general plan, you have, you have a design component that's in your draft zoning code right now. It's actually, the design piece of it is actually in place right now because it's not part of the implementation plan. So you have lots of design policies that can deal with height now. And I think what could come out of the, the committee could be policies that change what the height is and then we would do an amendment to create whatever the policy ends up being. I do think that's the intent by the committee is to kind of foster very specific policies that deal with what it looks like to have the height, what it looks like from a mass scale bulk and very particularly what it looks like. So we know what happens when you have the small, single story buildings there and are we keeping some of those or keeping all of them or what does that look like on a streetscape? Are we going to take a block and just go up three stories? Well, that probably is unlikely. I don't know that that would be something that the city is really interested in, so maybe looking at percentages of the block that could potentially go up that. And that's why I think the form-based code concept was, was put forward by the planning commission when they discussed it. So I think those are all things that are on the table, but I don't think, no, Mayor Wicks, that it's, that it's necessary to pull the ordinance back. We also don't, I mean, when's the last time a new building got built in the downtown? I mean, it's been a while. You know, there's, most of our downtown is built out, there's not a lot of vacant lots. Little, if you wanted to do something to go to this three-story type level, you'd have to assemble pieces of property to make it happen. So I, I don't know that there's, you know, a bunch of people beating down our door to do development, we haven't had anybody asked to do it even really, so. And this has been on, in the draft zoning ordinance since 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. With that, I'm going to look to my left, councilmember Ford, questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. I think I asked my questions the first time this came to council, but I, I do, I'm glad that this, that this came back to council though, because I had asked for there to be some sort of design district be formed because of concern for the, what the downtown area will look like eventually and I want to have a better plan moving forward out of the concerns because I, you know, listening to the, the citizens and their concerns about these massive ugly buildings that just tower over More Bay Boulevard and Main Street is a concern. So I heard that concern, which is why I asked for it to be brought back. And so, yeah, that's just kind of my background and before this meeting and where I was on that. So I don't have any, I don't have any further questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards, questions?
I think I'm good.
Councilmember Barton, questions?
No.
Councilmember Landrum.
So it's my understanding that the whole reason for the, the raised height to 37 feet from 30 feet is to incentivize development in downtown?
I think it's, it's a number of things, councilmember Landrum. I think it's, one, to encourage investment in our downtown, we haven't had a lot of that. We get a little bit more of it now, which is nice, but we haven't had a lot of it. And that was part of the conversation that took place at the planning commission level and the general plan advisory committee level when we were reviewing these policies. It was also, one of the thoughts was to incentivize potentially housing because we actually increased the allowed density, we placed a mixed use overlay over the downtown and increased the allowed density down there to kind of allow folks to bring forward projects that would have housing in them. There was also discussions about, through the process, about is there certain areas down there where we might want to allow short-term rentals above them? And that was a larger discussion related to short-term rentals, but that was also one of the things that was discussed. So it was kind of those three things, I think largely focused on in, to incentivize and encourage investment in our downtown and, and maybe as an option to provide some housing in downtown, which is what we heard when we went like door to door and talked to our, our commercial business owners in the downtown. We did this many times, often in concert with the chamber. And that's what we heard, like, we'd love to have more people living in the downtown. We, we actually had the conversation about what does it take to have you stay open for another hour or two in the evenings? I mean, that was a big conversation that we had and like almost all of the business owners were like, get us more people down here that are going to come to our business and we'll stay open. Like, fair point. So that's, that was part of the, kind of the sausage making that was taking place back then and the conversation that, that supported the increase in height.
So now, since the, the business on the corner of Monterey and More Bay Boulevard that the person in the audience was referring to is now vacant, that doesn't help that process along. It doesn't help, you know, to have people downtown when you have vacant buildings. Right? Is there some, I'm wondering, is there some way to incentivize businesses to improve their buildings that doesn't involve raising the height? Is there some other creative way that we could?
I mean, if there's funding sources, you can do, there can be, you know, facade improvements, you know, programs that are developed, but you have to have a funding source for it. You know, there are, there are different opportunities there, you know, and the city could look into those. There's, there's not a lot of real successful ones if you don't have a good funding source behind them. So usually the incentive is, you know, is there something they can do related to development that, you know, can get you some investment in your, in your downtown? So if people start wanting to maintain, like you get newer buildings, like we have Scott Coffey going into the B of A, that's going to be a very nice looking building when it's done. I think, you know, the folks around them, what typically happens is you start looking around, you're like, I'm the worst looking building on the block. And then people will maybe do something to, to improve what their buildings look like. And so you hope some of that takes place, you know, it's kind of planting the seeds, I guess.
Well, well, if they do improve their buildings, then their property taxes go up, right?
Depending on what the improvements are, yes. I mean, if you're just doing, you know.
Couldn't you incentivize that way? Like, you know, some, something like that to, you know, reduce that? I mean, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud. But I mean, there's, there's got to be creative ways that you can incentivize building. And then also, as far as the housing part, with the 30 feet height, is there any limitation to building housing on the second story? I mean, aren't there lots of buildings downtown that have housing above or not lots, but there's several?
Yeah, there are several, yeah. There are several buildings in our downtown that are two stories and have residential units on the, on the upper floors. That's, that's not an uncommon thing. Most of those buildings are fairly old. But yeah, we have those and, so they could still do it. It's kind of what I was saying before, we haven't had a whole lot of new building in the downtown. So the city's current policies, you know, weren't working to incentivize redevelopment and/or investment in the downtown. And that was part of the conversation that we took place at your, at the general plan advisory committee level and at the planning commission level, is what could we do to help with some of those things? And this is one of the items that came out of that. Other items was doing, to allow the mixed use overlay, so you could build residential above, increase the density to the maximum density that we allow so that we can have the folks that are going to do the investment tell their own story and we're not dictating to them about the number of units because if they can do something unique, we didn't want to squash that. So those were the conversations that were, that were taking place and a lot of the policies that are in the draft, in the, in the zoning code and that were in the general plan were meant to streamline processes, make processes easier, more straightforward, to help with, you know, that reinvestment in the community.
Well, one of the reasons I, I said that on that, that when, the night we got sworn in, that I brought this back up is after hearing former councilmember Heller, you know, say that he thought that that should be brought back, I, I really agree. I think anyone that sees San Luis Obispo downtown and the way that it looks right now versus what it used to look like, they've allowed so much building and height changes downtown and they have so much vacancy. downtown, and they have so much vacancy. I don't think it's helped them in any way, and it's not, hasn't made it more affordable to live there. Is that what we want here in Morro Bay? No.
Thank you. I have no questions. I'm going to switch over to some comments and see if we can move forward with something here. I agree with a lot of the comments made tonight. One size doesn't fit all. There was a lot of years spent on the general plan to get this up there, and this part of it was pushed through at the last minute from the last council. When I was here 12 years ago, we talked about this then, you know, facade improvements, all those things that you could try and do then, waving parking and low fees, reducing them. There was just the whole plethora of things like we're talking about tonight again. And I like the idea of doing the committee, including some business owners, planning commissioners, and I don't know if, you know, council wants to be involved at that point or wait till it grows from that. I think that a design-reviewed district incorporating some historical concepts might kind of give us a little bit of both, including community benefits. All those things could be addressed in this for this area and spread out from there, but we would have a starting point. Bulk and scale is a lot of concerns, I think, from everybody, and anyone who knows me knows I'm a property rights person. That being said, I feel that there has to be some balance to the things there, preserving what we have, but yet realizing the need for economic growth. And that's not going to happen if we don't make some changes. So how do we put it all together? And hopefully, we can look at maybe a design district incorporating these things in and having this conversation with some diverse groups of community members involved. So that is my comment for right now, and I will pass it to my left for comments.
That's almost sounded like a motion.
Nope, I'm waiting.
I'm going to go ahead and move forward to make a motion here to go ahead with the formation of a downtown design district by ad hoc group or committee to address height increase in the downtown and incorporate that effort into the city goals process.
Can you expand that, so not just?
Yeah, and I'd like to, yeah, yeah. If I may, expand that to include a couple business owners, council member, the mayor, chamber members, planning commission, I would think city manager, community development. Am I missing some resident?
Can we expand it beyond just the height? That's what I'm asking.
Oh, yes.
That's what I was asking for in your motion.
Sorry.
Would you be willing to expand on it not just being the height that we're discussing?
Yeah. So maybe we should do, sorry, let me start this again. To form a downtown design district ad hoc group to address the design or the details of the downtown to include, where do I want to go with this? Height, thank you. Height, historic preservation, design, community efforts, sorry, community benefits. I apologize. This is my first one like this where it's not written completely right here. And then, again, to include, well, in that part, two business owners, a couple members of the chamber, a couple of the major members of the planning commission, city staff, and council members. And incorporate the effort into the city goals process. There we go.
Mayor Wixson, if I could make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
There was some itemization of areas to look at. You might want to add on to the end of that and related matters, just to make sure that the mandate includes more than exactly that list, if the intent is to review items like that list.
Councilmember Edwards, it's your motion to add that language that you just shared.
Chris, sorry, can you repeat that for me?
After the list of items to consider, then you would add "and related matters." So then, the ad hoc committee has a mandate to do more than just those four, because there's probably some other items. It sounds like this is a broad review, if that's the intent of the council.
And, okay, and other related matters. Thank you.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Can I add to that?
You can put something out there, but it's up to her to amend her motion.
Can I move to add to that, that we include members of the community in the ad hoc group?
I think she already mentioned that.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay, go ahead.
We have a motion and a second. Do we need clarification, Ms. Swanson?
I'm sorry, didn't hear who made the second.
Councilmember Barton.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Landrum?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
And Mayor Wixson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Graham, and Mr. Qualick, and Mr. Rideo, and all of you for all the information tonight. So with that, we are at future agenda items. Does anyone have any future agenda items at this time that they would like to bring forward?
I don't at this time.
Yes, no? I do. If you will indulge me, Mr. Collins was nice enough, the city manager, to help me with this, because I've been struggling a bit and venting to him. So I'd like to look at a future agenda item for a study session on waterfront issues, as we have several key items and issues on the waterfront centered on or near the Vistra Power Plant site, and I'd like, some of those items include offshore wind, the potential for connectivity of wind energy to PG&E substation and the grid, other offshore wind considerations, injection wells on the Vistra site, and water reclamation facility projects, potential battery storage facilities, projects on the Vistra site, and master plan process for other portions of the Vistra site. So this is getting, for me, as we're moving through so many of these items, it's just so much of a crossing, and I felt that when I spoke with him, if we could do a study session, allowing the public to participate in everyone else, that it might help move us forward and clear up some misnomers and give us some direction. Most of these matters, like I said, have been disjointed and created confusion in the community. So if we can request city staff to put together a study session to cover these topics, I'd be looking for support from you all, and the study session would allow the community and council to understand all these pieces of the puzzle together in one place, so we're all together and doing it publicly, so they can have input, provide opportunity with this study session for council and the community to learn about upcoming issues, ask questions, and provide some background on each of the issues, provide a timeline, discuss the process involved, other agencies and organizations involved, and outline how and when community members can engage. So it's pretty hefty. I'm not looking to do this, you know, next meeting. I think it feeds into our goals and those things coming up, but I see it as a separate issue that will help feed our goals. And I know it's a lot, and it's a lot to ask of staff, and I will work with them and with the city manager to try and craft something that, we can cover all that if you feel that that's worth bringing back and doing. Yes, yes. Everybody's good with that? I know that was long. I haven't written, Dana.
Good thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collins. So, okay, perfect. We will put that on. And anyone else?
No, I just want, I want to get a copy of it.
Oh, I'll send it to you.
I started writing.
Oh, I'll send it to you. I have to give this, so. With that, if there's no other items, I will move for adjournment, and we will see you on February 28th, where I will be zooming in that night. Thank you.